If we can get everybody back here. Is Lori here? Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. And Mr. Cox, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilman Thomas?
Yes, it would be my honor if you would join me in prayer, please. Good Lord, we gather here for this council meeting. Give us a gift of peace and understanding that we may approach the matters we must handle with sincere and just hearts. May you watch over and guide our tongues that we may not hurt our friends in whom we work together in this community. Teach us to think wisely and carefully before we speak and act with courage and conviction for the good of all that we serve, and to deal charitably with one another that we may continue to enjoy mutual respect so we may serve in the spirit of love and truth and accomplishment. We ask in your holy name, amen.
Amen. Please be seated. We are going to have you speak after just a couple minutes of housekeeping, gentlemen. So the close session report from our attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first item was taken, pulled from the calendar. The second one was conference with legal counsel regarding potential litigation, City of Richcrest versus Southern California Edison. No action was taken, but directive was given to staff. The third item, conference with legal counsel regarding potential litigation, City of Richcrest versus County of Kern. Again, no action was taken.
Thank you. It is our extreme pleasure to welcome our military contingent, but both especially our Admiral Corey and Captain Wiley. And I had asked them to speak. I wanted to hear what they had to say about what's going on in the base and how it relates to this community. I had seen some reports that you had talked about young professionals that you may be leaving, may be leaving you because of the quality of life, and we want to see what we can do to make quality of life better for everybody in this valley. And so I welcome you so much. Admiral Corey, if you'll come and join us, please. And I'm understanding that you are willing, please, sir, you are willing to take questions after your presentation. And Captain Wiley, the same for you, sir. Thank you. So please, begin. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well, Mayor Breeden and a member of the council, thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you. We discussed this some time ago, but it's been difficult to align schedules. So let me start off by, you know, we don't do a State of the Union address or anything like that, but if you'll let me use that as an example, kind of the state of NOC Weapons First of all, our demand is high and growing higher. The demand for our work, the demand for our ideas, the demand for the products that we produce, off the charts, which was not the case in some of my previous tours out here. It is a great challenge to have and a significant challenge. And so why is that? I think our community is connected to the military and to, I'm not sure where I should stand to stop this feedback, but to our military's mission, our Navy, our Marine Corps' mission, more than almost any in our country. But if you'll bear with me to be a little redundant, the, our potential adversaries, and I'll go so far as to name them, particularly China and Russia, are producing capability increases, warfighter increases at a very fast rate that we haven't seen in over 20 years. The lingo that they use, you know, the think tanks, if you want to say that, is near peer competitor. I'll tell you, in some regards, they're absolutely a peer competitor. And it's a very serious challenge for the U.S. Navy. We have not been challenged like this, certainly since before the Cold War, and some would argue even much before that. And we also have the, you know, what you see in the papers every single day, the threats in the Middle East. If you want to make it as simple as terrorism, it's not quite that simple, but certainly that is part of it. So the U.S. Navy has a, the task before us is to take the actions that our country has asked us to do in the Middle East, as well as prepare for what, you know, in our business we would call a high-end fight, should it be required. You know, certainly my personal expectation is that if we at NOCD and our colleagues in this type of business do our jobs, we will have more than a credible threat and we will never have to have that high-end fight. So that is absolutely the way we are approaching that task. So specifically, NOC Weapons Division, Ms. Johnson, our executive director, and I, our task is fairly simple to describe. It's very difficult to do, but it's fairly simple to describe. And that is to figure out a way to produce capability faster and cheaper and have it remain relevant on the battlefield for longer. And to be quite frank, there are many of our experienced folks who think you can't have all three, that the intersection of those is not, you know, it's a null set to talk like some of our scientists might talk. I don't believe it. And I could give you examples, but I'm not in this room, okay? So if you will trust me just a little bit, I'll tell you, I was relaying this to Mayor Breeden before we started. I just left a meeting where I have a terrific example, and I'm not going to talk about it because things shouldn't be talked about like that. So it can be done, and to some extent, we are doing it. But that's a small example, and we, our challenge is to make this broader and across-the-board. So let's get specific about the business, some things that I get asked outside the fence, our business leaders, some of the, you know, if you'll, let me call them our alumni, some might call them retirees, but those that are continuing to serve in the schools or in private industry or in elected office. What we call new orders, you know, our tasking, our budget, our money that comes in to do work continues to increase. It is not on a steep slope, but it is a steady and a rising slope, and we expect that to continue. The Department of Defense budget as a whole is not like that, but the demands, as I said, on our business is much greater than the Department of Defense as a whole. We have a significant challenge of how are we going to do that because we are not in an environment where we can have unconstrained growth. So we are not going to be able to hire our way out of the problem of getting this work done. And so, you know, I'll quote one of our senior military folks, I'll reuse his quote to say, "We're going to have to think our way out of it." And this place, this town, this base, our workforce has been innovating way before we used that word. It's now a buzzword, it's overused. But innovation began here in the earliest days of NOCS. And so I think that that will continue. Let's talk about our workforce since you so rightly brought that up, Mayor. We hired, last year we hired about 700, little over. This year, we think we're going to hire 650 by the end of our fiscal year, the end of the month. And next year, we're not quite sure, we're in the, still in the negotiations slash discussions, but it'll be a healthy hiring rate, probably a little bit below where we are now. Our attrition is not bad. It's better than most. Most of our attrition is retirees, and they've served us a long time, and they, we thank them for their service, and as I said before, they often go on to serve our community in other capacities, and that's great and expected. But one statistic, and I don't see, there's a lot of our team here in the audience, but I don't see Richard Craycraft. He's our fantastic human resources professional. And as I was talking about this problem, he did, as our scientists often do, caution me not to get too optimistic. We're going to lose half of our young scientists and engineers by year 10. And we have a lot of steady data to say that. And that is a challenge that I've taken on personally, I've asked our organization to take on collectively, because the talent that we have been, so my predecessors have done a fabulous job at attracting first-rate talent. I just had a coincidental chance meeting with 15 of our new hires. These folks have been on board from two days to, I think the longest was three months. Excited, energetic, could not be more happy to be here. And they were from, so 15 individuals, 14 different schools, all across the country, vast array of backgrounds. So we are doing very well in a highly competitive market. But if we spend four, five, six, seven years training those individuals, they're very valuable. And we're losing half, as I say. If we can get that down to 25%, that would be a huge improvement. I think zero is unrealistic, but I think we can do better. So to get specific, so I had a group of 100 of our new people, so people less than five years in government service. It was a room about, you know, it was a little bigger than this. And I said, hey, I've been asked to come and talk to the city council. We had a study that we worked on together, so you know those results, I've read those results. And I asked him for some things that were new, and some of them were, I think, pretty easy. And we'll, so I think we can partner some more and take care of some of the hard ones. Our restaurants aren't very diverse. We're trying to attract a diverse workforce. I don't know how we do that in a free market, but I don't get paid to solve those kinds of problems, but I'll relay them. Strangely, none of them said the heat. I kind of expected that. I had a prepared response. I don't know what we'd do about that. But bike-friendly came up, which is probably not a surprise, that's coming up all across the country. And so I'd like to thank the city and the council because they started out by saying, hey, I noticed they did put in some bike lanes recently, and that's a big help. But when we, if we want to go out in town to go to a restaurant, which came up again, there's nowhere to lock them. So I noticed there's bike racks out front, so that was fresh in my mind. So I know the city has done it, and we've done it on the base, but that might be something that we could, we could figure out is more of those. And then it goes to some culture things, so things that younger folks like to do, and a place for music. And one of our employees brought up, for instance, the facility that is now, I love this restaurant, I guess I shouldn't say that. I love a lot of our restaurants, so I'll say that, too. But the grape leaf, that used to, we used to have live music there pretty regularly, and folks would congregate and spend time out of doors when it isn't 110. So that example came up. High-speed internet came up, and I know we're working on that, I know we're partnering on that. It's been frustrating for all of us, but I'd just like to reiterate that that request The airline at, in Kern, I know we've made great progress there, we're not quite over the finish line, but the difficulty to travel in and out came up as well. And then, you know, the, so the high-speed internet, it continued. It's a pretty long discussion, I think it would be better if we took care of that offline. But they did, you know, this was not high-speed internet, so I can play games, video games up over the garage. But it was high-speed internet related to our mission, related to growth, related to bringing businesses in a more diverse industrial climate. So it was a workforce and a work, how do we do our work better, kind of a discussion. So if you'll let me segue here, I'll take questions shortly into economic impact, because I get that question a lot when I come outside the fence. And so I want to get the numbers right. I can't quote them off the top of my head within about a percent, but I want to make sure that I get this one, this one correct. So last year, we had $246 million of contracts right here in Kern County, direct economic impact. We had $2 million in purchase cards in Kern County, and we have 29 active commercial research agreements on the base right now with businesses here in this area. And so those are all really strong numbers. I expect those numbers to be probably a little bit higher. I don't have the year-end closeout numbers here today. And just a reminder, I've said this before, but our, our small business focus, we're trying to shift that. And so just a reminder, we put this out throughout the town, but we may have some folks that have missed it. We're going to have a, what we used to call an Industry Day, we have a better term for it now, but I'll use that term because that's what you'll recognize, in early November, where we invite industry from throughout the country. But one of our focuses is to try to bring non-traditional businesses into, into our fence. We're trying to solve some problems that there are businesses, small, really innovative, whether you want to call them startups or others that have been started for a while inside of California that frankly don't want to do business in this part of the state or with us. We're trying to handle that inside NOCD by being, by changing a little bit to be more business-friendly. And I would look to partner more with the city to see what we can do to be more attractive. And then the last point is affordable housing. I probably should have brought that up earlier. And when I say affordable housing, I'm not necessarily talking about low income, but our younger employees that we bring in, you know, so when we ask them what they're looking for, it's a one-to-two-bedroom kind of units, whereas we tend to, our market here tends to favor the larger, which are, of course, more expensive dwellings. And then our more junior sailors, I know this is important, Captain Wiley has shared this, he has a couple of real specific examples. Our very junior sailors that find themselves in a family situation that they can't live in the accommodations we have on base have a very difficult time finding accommodations. And another one that I'll just, I'll acknowledge is a difficult problem, but we get paid, I get paid for difficult problems, is accessibility. So we have done fairly well at hiring wounded warriors and other individuals that have a disability. They pay off multifold inside of our organization. I could go on far longer than you want me to on that topic. But having, you know, accessible rental dwellings or affordable dwellings for those younger hires that we have that cannot get into our standard housing, that is a challenge that I would like to, to take on together. Let me make sure I didn't, didn't miss anything. I'm going to end on a really high note. Since I've been here, we have had a number of very high-level visitors. So I'm not sure this is right, but no one's been able to tell me it's wrong yet. I'll take that challenge if you'd like. I believe the last time a large aircraft with United States of America, a large blue aircraft with United States of America landed at China Lake was when John F. Kennedy did in 1963. And earlier this year, Secretary of Defense, after the President rolled out his budget, he gave a press conference on the steps at the Pentagon, jumped in a helicopter, went, jumped on his large airplane and landed here after a classified conversation with the President, interesting side note. But he loved what he saw, and so have some others. The Undersecretary of the Navy, Ms. Davidson came out and had a fantastic visit. And the word of mouth as they go back about what they see from our employees, what they see here, has brought a, my employees might say, an endless string of high-level visitors. They, quote I heard today, was, "It seems like an admiral or general every week." And more than a few have said, "Will you stop asking them to come because it's getting in the way of doing our work?" And I assure them that I'm not asking, it's the work that they do. And so that is fantastic, which is the, where I would like to end, if that's okay, and I'll take questions from there.
Is there any questions from council?
I do have one. Thank you very much, Admiral Corey. I appreciate you just even being here to come and talk to us. And I really appreciate the partnership that we're forming with the Navy, and absolutely am willing to help where we can to solve some of the problems because retaining the young employees is a, is a big deal for us, too, in the city council. In talks with these young employees, have you gotten a sense of, the ones that do stay here, what are the things that are keeping them here? Like, in a sense, what are we doing right as a community to keep them here and as a base?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. I can't give you a concise answer. I would like to. That was part of what I tried to do in preparation for coming here. Many of them enjoy the outdoor activities, which is kind of obvious. I know that's what I enjoyed the most when I first got here. They have definitely brought up the support from the community. I will tell you, the quality of the schools comes up a lot, not from that particular group, because many of them don't have children that are school-aged yet. But in terms of our, when I talk to our employees that are very happy with this community, the, to be quite frank, most of them cite the mission and what they are doing to deliver products to the warfighter, and the, and the community does, tends to come up second, which is wonderful, which is why I also don't have such a concise answer. But that's what I'd give you now, and we'll see if I can get a better answer as we move forward. It's a great question.
Fantastic, thank you. I especially appreciate the bike-friendly part of that. That's one thing I wasn't aware of, that people were interested in looking for a bike-friendly community. But I think that's definitely within the city's jurisdiction to work on that, so.
Yeah, if I can throw some kudos, Skipper Wiley has turned cycling back on, on the, on the base. And so our employees, many of them were not permitted to ride to certain parts of the base for what we believe was, was a safety issue. And Skipper Wiley and I and our, some of our talented folks looked at it and said, well, we don't think that's quite right. And so thanks, Skipper, in public. And we do get a lot of feedback on that, they appreciate that, so thanks.
Fantastic.
Lori? Couple things. I do want to touch on something really quickly, and it's good news for you, because I don't think you're aware of it, but we had Governor Brown's economic development person here. There is $200 million within the state of California set aside for grants for small, medium, and large businesses to retain, to grow, or to stay and bring them into California. So I can help with that part because he is very, very good about working with us, making sure that our packets of information that we send out for the grant packages, he hand does everything. So I can work with you and work with businesses to help there. So that's good news. My questions for you are, what is the name of the new Industry Day and the date? That's my first one.
Thank you. I'll repeat it on the microphone.
Well, that sounds so lovely, like I want to attend. You can't make it a nicer name?
Yeah, so I, thank you. That's our Vice Commander, Captain Andina. And so it's always good to have folks backing you up. I, that name escaped me, so we were given that name, to be honest. So we're required, we're not required, we're asked by Navy Headquarters to use that term. So Long Range Acquisition Forecast, or LRAF, if you're in our business with too many acronyms, is what they've asked us to call it. And, but you can call it an Industry Day, I won't mind.
I think we have it down for November 2, 3, and 4, is that right, Captain?
I think it's 2nd and 3rd.
2nd and 3rd, okay.
Yeah, that, thank you. And I'll also throw out, you know, for the record here, anyone that has questions can contact our Small Business Office. You all know the area code, I'll say it anyway, 760-939-1135.
Do we have, maybe this is something we can take off, offline, but I know that a lot of people think we know what's going on on base and the base should know what's going on in the city, but it doesn't work that way. Is there something that we could do, maybe looking at a, I hesitate to use the word "shared calendar," but maybe we can put our heads together to come up with something where we can put all the events together? Because I never know what's happening on base, I have absolutely no connection there anymore. So I have no way of knowing.
So I, I think that's a great idea. How about, I'll commit to, we'll try, see where it goes.
That would be amazing, I would appreciate that. And when you talk about the culture, that's my last question. Live music, I understand that, and I know there's, there's other activities in that arena. Did you talk about, or have they indicated fees or pricing ranges that they would be willing to pay for local? Because I know in the past, and this is the past, I don't want to repeat it, but it was, you know, this amount, well, that seems high because it's Richcrest, and we're trying to erase that mentality. So is there a dollar amount that they would be willing to pay to do so? If it's $5 or $10 more than versus going down to LA for the same thing, or anything like that in the discussions at all?
We didn't get to that level of detail. I think that's a great suggestion, and I'll be happy to take that back and ask, ask a group to see if we can get you some feedback. I wouldn't want to speak for the younger generation, I'm often reminded that I'm no longer a member of them.
I understand, it's a painful revelation for me, too. And then housing pricing, the same thing, it's just kind of what they're, they're looking at, what their expectation is. And when you say junior sailor, are you referring to E6 and below?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and we can absolutely give you that. I'll tell you one, I'll just acknowledge upfront, one of the things that I, we have gotten this request before, is we've had an interaction, not in this forum, but a similar one. Giving you an accurate demand signal is very, very difficult, so I'll just acknowledge that upfront. But what, again, what I'll commit to is, is giving you what we can, and I think it will be useful. Maybe not exactly what you'd like, but definitely useful.
That's all we can ask, just ballpark it. Married to an E4 with two kids and lived in town, I know what that was like, so.
Great, thank you.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Are there you, too? One thing I have is the broadband. We have a very, very strong active broadband committee working with the city, and Jay Chen is our Chair, Bill Summers, Chip Powe, there's a whole bunch of people on that committee. And if you could ask, I just recently asked our city manager if he would meet with us specifically, because we have some, we've talked to the California PUC, and Commissioner Sandoval is very, very interested in trying to find a way to make it more accessible to people both locally, not so much on the base, because you already are doing your thing on base. We're wondering how we can get it. Would, do you have anybody that would be willing to work with us on that? And if you could just pass along their name and we could...
You bet. I think we do. I know who is most vocal, and I know how to find that individual.
Okay.
So I'll submit that challenge.
A vocal person is a good one, that's that.
If that individual either isn't the right one, okay, so I'll ask you for your feedback on that. Or if they declined, then we'll see if we could get someone else to volunteer.
Marvelous, good.
Great suggestion.
Well, I appreciate you being here. And is there any questions or comments from the public? Mr. Matthews?
I keep getting this frog down here, I don't know where he comes from. Dave Matthews, address is on file. I was pleased to hear that the workload is increasing. I was not quite aware of that. As far as the retention rate is concerned, I don't think it's just our community. I listen to a few talk radio shows here and there, and every once in a while, they talk about people that do have jobs as opposed to the ones that don't. And the ones that do have jobs, in the younger generation, seem to have itchy feet. I guess we raised a bunch of generations with itchy feet, including my grandson, by the way. But our generation were more, what would you say, not dormant, but wanted to stick around. And I have managed to do that for almost 50 years. And anyway, I just wanted to point that out, that I don't think it's just our area, but it is a problem, any, with almost any company. And I know there was something else, but no, I'll have to get it to you later, I'm sorry, thank you. sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Admiral? Sir, would you like to introduce your staff to us?
Sure. Well, if you'll let me expand on that a little bit, because Captain Wiley is not my staff, but you already introduced, but in case anyone missed it, and the one sitting closest to the front is Captain Rich Wiley, who is the commanding officer of the, of the base, and my partner in our, in our mission. Behind him is our Vice Commander Carl Landina, Captain Carl Landina. He now wakes up most days in, in Point Magoo, so he, he takes care of much of, of the business on that side of the mountain, and he's, I don't know how many miles he's put on various vehicles and, and the airplane, going back and forth, but he, he takes care of, of all of the hard problems for us. Next to him is our, is our newest Lieutenant Commander, Justin Estrada. We, I was fortunate enough to promote him, I think, a week-ish ago. My days kind of run together, as busy as they keep me. And then Rebecca is one of our, our newer hires, and I asked her to come to make sure I didn't speak out of turn there. And I think, I don't see Melissa, but I thought our Chief of Staff, Melissa Fennell, she must have gotten, okay, she got pulled away. I thought she would, she would be here as well, so, thank you. We have a great team out there, and I always appreciate an opportunity to share them.
We, we love having you, we love the opportunity of sharing what we can do together, because working together makes it easier for all of us, and that's easy to say, it's very difficult to do. And your staff has been more than your staff, all your, your team has been more than willing to meet with us and talk about ideas on how we can make things better, and I really appreciate that. And you had a wonderful meeting with members of the community about two months ago. I thought that was a good start on your watch, and appreciate it, so thank you.
Well, thanks.
All right.
If I could pile on just a little bit, so I, I talked as the Commander of Naval Air Warfare Center Weapons Division, if I can just talk as me. I can't, I cannot express to you, my English is not advanced enough to, to say how happy I am to have this job in this place right now. I, I get a chance to tell our employees that pretty regularly, but Debbie, my wife, my two sons, Lieutenant J.G., Nick Corey's just about to finish training in the Super Hornet, and Second Lieutenant Sam Corey, who is in the Basic School in Quantico, Virginia, in the Marine Corps, went to school here, they lived here twice, they come back here, they think of this as home. This community has been fabulous at supporting my family. I have lived in a lot of places inside the US, and I have lived overseas, and, and I don't know of a community that has a tighter relationship with a base. So from a personal level, while there are things that we hope that we can work on together to improve this, this place, and, and make it more attractive to some of the people that may look for other opportunities, from where I stand, I, I am very much appreciative with, with the town, with the location, and, and certainly, most importantly, with the workforce that we have, that come through the fence every single day. And, and our, you know, the dedication that they have to produce the products we're being asked to, to produce is second to none, and I'm enormously appreciative of that, so thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Captain Wiley? Our very own Coyote.
Yes, ma'am. Let me echo what the Admiral said. It's not often that the captain gets to, to come after the Admiral, because usually the senior officer will have the final word. So any of those questions, please direct to him at the end. But let me thank you all, and everybody in this room, for the support you have for the base. Nancy Walker said about humility, thank you isn't enough, it's about understanding, it's about experience, it's about knowledge, it's about humility, and it's about thank you. So thank you all for this opportunity, and about the commitment you give to that base every day. I can't say thank you enough. And a lot of what we do is, as we will say, as goes the community, so goes the base, and vice versa. So thank you for your activism and what you do. I usually start off a lot of my talks, so excuse me if I waver in and out, because I will move around like an Italian person, even though I am not, but I start off with a picture of a carrier, loaded carrier deck. And I will say, the wonderful work that's being done by the Warfare Center and our other tenants on base contribute to the 90-plus, and it's high 90-plus weapons that are coming off that deck, or researched, developed, tested, and/or evaluated on that base. That is a huge number in support of what goes on with this nation, and in support of her national policies and her national defense. So they are to be given a lot of kudos, and the Admiral in leading the way of what goes on. I will not talk to the sexy side of that, because I am in support of that. So as you see the background, I am trying to find ways every day to make sure that what they do on a daily basis go unencumbered, and the 9,000 to 10,000 people that drive onto that base, 90% are civilians, are unencumbered, but I support them and their efforts carry on. So what I'm going to talk about tonight are my priorities. I will have seven priorities, they are not in order, but they will kind of jumble every day, but every day I will address each one in various forms, and some more heavily on a daily basis, but in forms nonetheless. Safety and security is my number one priority, that I will not rest on. So you will see interactions in and around the base, you will see base postures, a lot of them will say that some of the barriers or stop signs I am putting up are hurting the flow to the base. They aren't there to increase the posture, the safety and security of everybody who works, trains, lives, and goes to school on that base. From that, I will never relax. So, certain exercises, we've had a number of anti-terror, or anti-terrorism, active shooter exercises, other exercises that will test our posture, and we're working daily with our friends from Ridgecrest Police, as well as Highway Patrol, as well as NCIS and FBI, to make sure that we train to those. So heaven forbid, if anything were to happen, we know that our posture, our ability to respond, and not only respond as a base, but respond as a team in and around the area is high. So I want to say thanks to Chief Strand, and what he has done, has been an active partner in and of that, with Lee McDowell, my security officer. I always know that they're there, and they're always there for support, so thank you for the measures that go onto that. Next is infrastructure. We're a 1940s base, so there are a lot of great things that go on out there, but on the other hand, I will also have a slide that follows my first slide, which will point to the hundreds of miles of water lines, of paved, of unpaved roads, of fence lines, of, of electrical distribution lines, things that we have to pertain, that's things that we have to stay focused to on a daily basis. I have a wonderful Public Works Officer and Commander Brian Longbottom, who leads a great team in trying to address things that will happen. I'll go into water and energy after this, but there will be times in which you'll have a water break, and I have, I have the luxury of a lot of 1.2 million acres, I also have the burden of 1.2 million acres. And when you look at over probably 500 miles of both paved and unpaved roads, as well as close to 300 miles of water lines, it takes an active, involved interest from my Public Works Department to make sure we're getting out, to make sure that we don't have leaks in those, and if we do have leaks, we stop those leaks right away, so we minimize the water loss. So that infrastructure from that to electrical distribution to buildings that need to be replaced, that need to be fixed or repaired. The Admiral talked about retaining his workforce. I am, I am part of that, because I have a gym that needs active repair. It was built in the 1940s. I need to find a way to, to make it fresh, to freshen it up, as we will say, on base, so that, you see the wonderful gyms outside, but I need to make sure that those who are working on base, if you're driving by the gym, you may want to work out at In Shape in Town, and I'm all for that, in support of it. But if you're driving by the gym on base because it's not up to snuff, I've got to find a way to bring it up to that. Also, our runway, I'm happy to say, my primary runway, 321, is going to come up this weekend. It's been over a year in the process. That is huge, because that was asphalt, that's a 1940s runway. I have two other runways that are in work right now, so we've got to dive into them. Those are just the tip of the iceberg, of things that we need to address. Infrastructure-wise, we are not unique, we are the same as other bases, so we compete against some very active programs out there, and operational platforms, operational bases, but we need to find ways to shore up our infrastructure and to make it better. Third is going to be our community outreach. Let me introduce one of my newest members of the staff, that's Margot Allen. She replaced Peggy in the last year, and has been a fantastic addition to the staff. A native, or not a native, came to Ridgecrest at the age of seven, and has grown up through the schools here, so has been huge. She is my point person for a lot of our outreach, and combining with your collaborative mayor, as well as luncheons and other things, in which I will say, I need to keep my hand on the pulse. So if there's ways in which, yes, we can foster that a little bit better, meeting with, we're meeting with the schools here in another couple of weeks over lunch, to find ways on better communicate, ways that we can support the schools, maybe with gates, other things in support of making sure the traffic flow, to other ideas on, you know, for things on base, just to better communicate how the base can help the schools. Next is going to be water and energy. Water is huge. I have got to find a way, and we have decreased our, our water usage by over 50%, I now sit at about 1,700, 1,800 acre feet, I need to come down to about 1,200 to 1,300. I also have to work in conjunction with the city, in conjunction with the county and the state, to find ways to better conserve on my part. I also got to find ways to better, or to help find ways to find secondary sources for water. What can be, and how can the Navy be an active participant in that? Just a couple of days ago, I went with Supervisor Gleason, as well as members of my staff, as well as members of, or Don Zidiva, we went over to Fort Irwin. It's a different aquifer over there, but they are trying to find ways to lengthen the, lengthen the, the use of their aquifer. Some of those practices may or may not be able to put in practice on our base, I don't know, but the sharing of ideas with Fort Irwin, not just with water, with energy, and a waste energy management plant that they have, but also with security, sharing of ideas on how we, how we tackle a, a very similar and complex problem that we have around here, because we have a limited supply, I need to find a way to make it, make it, make it go in support. As well as energy, always finding ways for, well, to conserve energy through the, through habits, habit patterns, as well as working with the SCE and others in renewable energy resources, and how do we lengthen, lengthen some of the lines that we have here on base. Manning is always going to be a problem for us, cycling in and out of staff, staff's being cut down, we will never use an excuse, but we're in always a constant, constant flow of, of rehiring, but learning how to stretch our staff and leverage the great staff that the NOC has, in trying to tackle things from environment to safety to security to explosive safety. Environment, we are caretakers of it, we have a lot of natural resources, we have the desert tortoise, that we have to conserve, along, as, as well of other, of other species. Mojave Commander Summitt, in which the Admiral and I participate in, our horse and burrow population is getting up to the point that we have to, we have to find a way to manage it, and it isn't just something unique to China Lake, it's unique to its BLM, also with Fish and Wildlife, also with Fort Irwin, partnering with them to find ways to caretake for the environment, as well as the animals that are on it. And the last is encroachment. Encroachment, defined as a term, is things that will couple or, or hurt the, or base's ability to operate in the long run. We have wonderful support from the community, we don't have houses that are coming up. Thankfully, I don't have a lot of noise complaints, and I thank you guys for that. We try to communicate with some of our patterns, but there are a number of other issues, potentially from water and energy, and wind turbines, that we have to keep an eye on, to make sure that whatever is being posed out there does not hurt the abilities, or the ability of the base to operate. That completes what I had to say, but as far as the support from the community, I can't say thank you enough.
Thank you, sir. Is there any council questions or comments?
Just one, one comment, just first of all, thank you very much for, for being here, and the only thing I could think of to, to say was, and I'm, I believe this falls under your jurisdiction, I'm not really totally keen on, on NOZ versus NOC, but I believe the issuance of, of passes for like the Petroglith Festival, things like that, we've seen you guys kind of open that up quite a bit more in, in the past year, and just huge gratitude for, for doing that, and I, I appreciate that. So that definitely helps out us as a community to, to celebrate that important festival, and hope that continues, so, thank you.
Right on.
As I eat my microphone. Thank you for all that is, is going on there, and the ability for us to work together, and how everybody is trying and, and reaching out. Please do not leave before I get your contact info and I make sure you have mine, okay? Because new faces, I'm excited. On the environment, like with the horse and burrow and stuff, I'm assuming you work with BLM, I know that a lot of the animals used to be shipped by train back east, but I understand that's been curtailed some, is that still the case, or are they still trying to ship out to, to help? Because I know they utilize them back there for work.
There's no, there's no one answer. So what used to happen isn't necessarily what's happening right now. I can't go into it, because again, we're still working with the agencies on how best to caretake for them, but a lot of those are being explored. So you talk about shipping them out, you talked about adoptive areas for them, you talk about other means, those other means we're exploring, and we used to tackle it as a base, but in working with Fort Irwin and seeing the problems that they have with the numbers that just keep increasing, as well as the numbers over in Death Valley with the Fish and Wildlife Service, we just had a meeting about three or four weeks ago in which all those staffs combined to try to find ways to reduce the numbers that are around here. So, I know it doesn't answer your question as far as what's the possible solution, I don't have one, but working together, hopefully we'll find one.
I really didn't need the solution, but it's nice to know that, yes, I knew that some avenues had closed, but just to see kind of where we're at with that is, is great, so thank you for the information.
That's all I have right now. I just want to say thank you. We've had a long personal relationship, and I have, have grown, getting to know you and your family, and I know you're going to be leaving us in December, and you're going to Monterey?
In January, so it'll take a month away from me here, in January. But yes, I will be going to Monterey.
I think we all are going to miss you. I, I've missed Mike Moran, but I've had great joy getting to meet the Corey's and how we work together, and we're going to continue, and I appreciate what all of you have done and continue to do for this community, because, again, it is a partnership, and I thank you for that. And is there any comments or questions from Mr. Witnick?
Tom Witnick, I own Guns for Us and KIZI and TV, and I want to first say, Admiral, I, I, when I was on the base, I'm retired from the base, Program Manager and Contract Manager, and I did some of these industry days, and I really enjoyed them, and I do miss them. Being in business the way I am, I can attest to new employees coming to Ridgecrest, because myself and my staff, we spend endless hours, and I think you need to start paying me for this, explaining to all the new customers California gun laws. And it's like an endless stream of your new employees coming in and wanting to know about guns. Where I'm going with this comment, though, is that, one thing I do notice in, in the discussions I have with the new employees, is that they don't really know what's available here. A lot of the new ones that have come to this valley and taken employment here, they, they know some things that we have available, as far as the outdoor activities and things like that, but when I start telling them, well, and I can't think of anything, a real example, except like a shooting range or something like that, they don't know that when they get here. And it's possible that maybe there could be some kind of coordination between the base and the city as far as having something that lets your new employees know that it's not just a place in the valley, that there is a lot of things to do here, there is a lot of great things about this community that these people don't know about. How many churches are here, and you mentioned restaurants and things like that. I, I just think that there's possibly a better communication that we could have with, to help these new employees adapt to Ridgecrest. Thank you.
Please.
First of all, thanks for the, the suggestion. One of the, one of the developments that, that we've had in the last couple of weeks, actually, is the spouses primarily from VX-31 and VX-9 on the base, they each had their own handout that they gave to the spouses that arrived, and they, they got together on their own and, and put them together, and so it is a, it's a pretty good product. And so what we've done is shared that with our staff, and, and we're exploring how we might make that available to our employees. I, quite frankly, hadn't thought about engaging with the county to see what we might have missed in there. I think it's a great product as it is, but maybe we can make it better, so thanks for the suggestion, appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there any other comment from the public? Well, again, then, I thank both of you, I appreciate it. Let's give them a couple of minutes, unless you want to stay and stay through all the council meeting, because I know y'all have nothing better to do. And we'll give them a couple of minutes to leave and say their goodbyes, and so we will adjourn for five minutes, and we thank you very much. five minutes, and we thank you very much. Okay, five minutes, guys, we're not going to kick you out the door, I promise. Lori? Sorry, we're trying to get back to order. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a, and that is yours to present, Lori, uh, a presentation of a proclamation for Constitution Week to representatives of the Daughters of the American Revolution. So let's, I'll join her up there, please.
Wherever you would like to be, but close would be good. Would be good. Oh, now there's title, don't, don't make me have to learn titles. Boss is good, I like, I like those titles. Regent, oh, lovely. I want to, yes, that's very lovely. Okay. So this is a proclamation from the city regarding Constitution Week. Uh, whereas September seventeenth marks the two-hundred-twenty-ninth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law nine-one-five guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. So therefore be it proclaimed. We, the City Council of the City of Ridgecrest and the State of California, do hereby proclaim the week of Sept- September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in, in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. So today, um, I would like to present this to you ladies, and it is signed by the mayor and all of council. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. We, as an organization, the DIR really believes in this constitution and, and believe in supporting it. I'd just like to, uh, challenge everyone to read the constitution this week. Remind yourselves what's in it, we talk about it a lot, but we don't read it a lot. So, everyone here, read it this week.
Thank you for all the work you do. You make us remember, and you, thank you. Okay, the next item is a presentation by the City Manager Dennis Spear on an overview of the strategic planning process. Mr. Spear.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, and we're, uh, at this particular point in time, I think we're waiting for the PowerPoint to come up. There we go. Uh, yes, what I want to do tonight is I want to review the strategic planning process, review the prior, uh, and this isn't your council, but prior city council actions regarding to our strategic plan, and request direction for future action. In terms of the strategic plan, and, and I do want to point out that a number of these preliminary slides were, were actually slides that were from the original presentation three years, I think it was three years ago now, but it's a, it's a refresher for the two council members that are on this council, but, uh, it's also a review, uh, for the, uh, the, the new council members on this particular council. But a strategic plan by definition is relatively short written document that's visionary, conceptual, directional in nature, that describes an organization's vision, mission, objectives and goals, and its strategies for reaching the goals and objectives based on the environment in which the organization is operating. Now, in terms of types of strategic plans, there are many. Uh, there is an outline form, a summary form, comprehensive, focused and compiled. I think I mentioned three years ago that in research I found that, I think it was the City of Dallas, is, uh, close to five hundred pages as far as their particular strategic plan. And in terms of the purpose of, uh, the strategic plan, is it's a management tool, it's a guide for services delivery, it prompts-
Excuse me a minute, Dennis, uh, Chief, can you go close that back door? We're getting way too much noise from out there.
Thank you. I was going to do it, thank you, Mike.
The purpose of a strategic, uh, for a strategic plan is, it's a management tool, it's a guide for services delivery, it prompts unity and direction, it defines who, what, why, it focuses on the future. In terms of the planning concept and the development phases, uh, you can look at it as a policy plan program, and that equates to goals, objectives, and specific actions. In terms of, uh, an example, a goal could be to improve the condition of streets, the objective then could be increase street fund revenues, and your actions could be a street measure, could be allocation of discretionary funds, it could be the application for grants that pertain to streets. In terms of long-range versus strategic planning, a long-range plan, that's a plan for accomplishing a set of goals with the assumption that current knowledge of the future is reliable. A strategic plan is a response to a dynamic, changing environment. In terms of strategic planning, it may not always, uh, flow smoothly as far as the process, it may not always flow smoothly, it's a creative process, it moves forward and backward be final, before final decisions are made. In terms of, uh, uh, the, uh, mission statement, it's a mission analysis that clarifies why the organization exists, who we serve, what is required by those we serve, and how those needs are met. Terms of value analysis, it seriously looks at the real values that drive our ambitions and desires for the organization, and how these values are communicated both internally and externally. Terms of vision analysis, in a perfect world, what does the organization look like five years from today, and how would we best serve our stakeholders and our customers? Uh, I know you can't read this, apologize, matter of fact, I apologize to council, I had intended for you to actually have your own copy, but the copy machine, uh, broke down upstairs this morning, so I wasn't able to do that, but I can tell you what's on there. This is a, uh, this is a one-pager developed by a consultant from the City of Pasadena, and it, uh, what they did is they have their, a very succinct, uh, mission statement, concise, uh, as far as their vision statement, they list their, they identify their, um, uh, their core values, and then they follow with, and they've cheated here because there are more than five, I think there's seven, one, two, three, four, five, no, six, uh, goals is what they actually identify, but it's a one-pager, uh, as far as an outline form. And then in terms of the strategic plan process, uh, you, you first develop a strategic profile for your baseline, environmental analysis, strategic forecasting if necessary, if you're out there in, in outer years, internal assessment, or resource audit, uh, which, well, and there's an individual slide on that, development of strategic alternatives, and strategy evaluation and choice. And those are, the last three are really a, a process that, uh, is probably where we're, we're at right now, we need to be forward with. In terms of the SWOT analysis from a strategic profile standpoint, it's, it's where we take an honest and objective look at our resources, our internal environment, and our organizational structure, what are our true strengths and weaknesses, how will these affect and influence our major customers, stakeholders, and our target result areas? In terms of the environmental scan, that's also part of the SWOT analysis, additionally examine the external influences on our organization, locally, regionally, nationally, globally, what are the threats and opportunities, and how do we address these as they relate to major customers, stakeholders, and target result areas? And environmental analysis, environmental analysis systematically identifies the environmental opportunities and threats which the organization faces. At least three environmental factors of obvious concern in developing the strategy, social, economic, and political factors, product technological factors, and competitive factors. In terms of strategic forecasting, it may be necessary to predict future environmental conditions in order to determine future threats and opportunities. In terms of continuing with strategic forecasting, it may be necessary for the strategists to predict, not simply project, if the past cannot be relied upon as the sole predictor of the future. In terms of strategy formulation, internal assessment or resource audit is followed by a development of strategic alternatives through, uh, and I should identify that the SWOT analysis is a strength, weakness, weaknesses, opportunity, and threats, and the, as far as the TAOZ matrix, uh, that's where you actually, uh, well, you, where, where you pair combinations as far as determining which strategies, uh, may be effective and may work, and which strategies may not in achieving a particular goal or objective. And then finally, strategy evaluation and choice. In terms of internal assessment of the resource audit, inventory of the organization's resources, capabilities, and internal constraints, the resource audit seeks to address this need by identifying the organization's strengths and weaknesses along the following dimensions, operational, financial, and management. Development of strategic alternatives, that's to identify what strategic options are available to the organization, the identification of viable strategic alternatives using all pertinent information from the previous external and internal analyses, is the crea-, uh, is the creative step in strategy formulation. And in terms of development of strategic, uh, strategic alternatives, in general, a viable strategy is one where the organization is able to exploit environmental opportunities and/or ward off the threats it faces by employing its strengths and overcoming its weaknesses in order to achieve goals and objectives. Now, a TAOZ matrix analysis, this, uh, it, it basically matches or depicts matches, uh, strengths and weaknesses with opportunities and threats. You can have strategies that are, uh, strengths and opportunities, you can match weaknesses with opportunities, you can match strengths with threats, and you can, uh, match weaknesses and threats, but all those different strategy matches are, they're developed to generate alternatives for consideration and weed out the alternatives that, um, uh, aren't viable. Now, strategy evaluation and choice, strategic alternatives must be evaluated to determine which of them represents the best match between the organization and the environment, in light of the organization's objectives and management values and preferences. Minimum tests of each alternative strategy must be considered, and, and this is where you, um, after you've identified, and we'll get into this in a second, but after you've identified your goals, there are certain tests that you have to put them through, and there's certain analysis to find out if, if they're actually attainable and if they're viable. But your minimum test of alternatives is suitability, validity, consistency, feasibility, vulnerability, and potential rewards or benefits. And then the challenges in strategy formulation is to balance among at least four factors, if it's possible, if you're capable of it, if it's compatible, and if it's consistent, and to compromise between exploiting opportunities and building on strengths, and between avoiding threats and overcoming weaknesses. Time strategic actions with an awareness of anticipated yet unknown future events, anticipate the reactions of competitors to the new strategy, and adjust your strategy accordingly. In terms of critical strategic issues and approaches, identify the critical few issues that absolutely must happen to move forward with our vision. Identify the best approaches to move us from our current state to our desired future state. Now, in terms of goals and objectives, uh, these are measurable parameters to achieve the strategic approaches that address our critical strategic issues. The goals must be definable and attainable, the objectives must be practical and achievable. In terms of strategic management, attention of the, to the totality of circumstances, a willingness to adapt, formulation of future vision, development of competitive strategy, creation of organizational structure that will deploy resources as needed. In summary, the city does not have a complete strategic plan, prior goal, uh, goal-setting workshops did not follow a strategic planning process, finding, so the findings are questionable. Some of the goal-setting workshop goals are supported by, uh, both the, uh, this year's top-line survey as well as a, a prior top-line survey. Validated prior findings may be used to develop a strategic plan summary. Priority, uh, prior lists of goals from the public and staff were prepared, but they've never been explored. And then prior actions, in October first of, of two thousand thirteen, during a strategic plan workshop, a strategic planning process was presented, related prior, prior reports were reviewed, value of these reports were assessed, alternative approaches for developing a strategic plan were provided, approach for preparing a strategic plan summary was recommended, the city council approval of the recommended approach was requested. The city council, uh, held a workshop at, on October twenty-sixth of two thousand thirteen to discuss the establishment of a mission statement, a vision statement, and a core, and core values for the City of Ridgecrest. At a regular meeting on November sixth, two thousand thirteen, the city council directed staff to return with a draft mission and vision statements, along with tentative core values for discussion, comment, and formal approval. On December fourth, two thousand thirteen, the city council approved the mission statement, the vision statement, and core values. Just reading the mission statement that was approved is that the City of Ridgecrest provides exemplary, fiscally responsible municipal services in a manner which promotes a safe and sustainable community. The vision statement that was approved states, "The vision for the City of Ridgecrest is to provide cost-effective municipal services which features a clean, safe, and aesthetically pleasing environment, and strong, diverse economic and business opportunities mindful of the military mission," I think, "and other operations." And then in terms of core values, uh, just reading the, the column, not the, uh, the additions, but integrity, honored, uh, honor, honesty, transparency, responsiveness, fiscal stability, innovation, engagement, economic development, patriotism- fiscal stability, innovation, engagement, economic development, patriotism and partnership. In terms of determination and direction, uh, the city council determined not to follow the recommended approach at the time. Uh, the city council, the then city council, I should say, directed that the process continue with, uh, through a series of community workshops. This is for goal setting. And then, uh, future action and direction is, uh, uh, the establishment of goals, uh, and that process involves identification of potential goals, to a discussion on those goals, evaluation of those goals, uh, prioritization of those goals and then select, uh, potentially the top three to five goals, uh, and then to complete, uh, the strategic plan. In conclusion, though the city does not have a strategic plan, a completed strategic plan, uh, the council has adopted the missions, visions and values which are all components of a strategic plan. The only component needed to complete the strategic plan is that of goals. Subsequently, it would be appropriate for the goals to be established. Therefore, staff proposes to return to council with a recommendation for identifying potential goals. And that concludes the presentation.
I, um, asked for this because I was discussing with the city manager some things that, why they haven't been done. And he said, "Oh, they were done by previous councils." And I said, "I wish the three of us had had the opportunity to do that, to know that, to learn from that. I think we could have accomplished more and, uh, not, um, not been distracted by other things if we knew where we were exactly going." And so I asked him to present this so that no matter what happens in November, everybody else understands, we do have this path. We just need to find a way to adopt it and stick to it and make it work. And if, if you are going to come back to us with, with goals and your staff is going to, sir, I'd like to have a, a time where maybe a few minutes, a few minutes, um, an hour before our normal council meeting or something like that, where some of the public can have that same opportunity to bring some of those back. Is that a doable thing?
Uh, yes, it is, but what I had anticipated was coming back first with, um, some goals that have been, I mean, to, to just acquaint you, uh, with where we were in the process as far as goal setting. And I won't, um, provide the details as to why it stopped when it did, but, but there were reasons.
I understand.
But, uh, at least acquaint you with the goals and where they came from. Maybe even, um, uh, present again what was recommended. Maybe this council would have a different take on it, but, uh, for discussion. In other words, not a presentation, but, uh, I, I, there will be a presentation, but it'll be a discussion item. And then from that, you could give direction as to whether you actually want to move forward with workshops or if you want to borrow, uh, or if you wanted, uh, to follow the recommendation that was made at the time or, uh, give other direction, in fact, for how you would want to approach the, the last phase really of the strategic plan, which is establishing goals.
Is there any council comment?
I, I just had one quick thing. That's, um, I, I, for me, this is really my, for like first time really seeing this.
Yeah, me too.
And it's a, it's a lot for me to digest and I think it's, it's outstanding and I would, I would like for us to get an opportunity to kind of dig into it and as a council and, and understand it as far as I'm concerned and then see how we can progress, proceed forward with it. Cause you did say there were some more goals and stuff that we needed to, to finish all.
Well, there have been goal, the, the, the goals that had been actually developed, uh, both by the public and by staff and by prior councils, uh, were never brought before the council for discussion. They were, uh, they were, uh, developed and they, but they, uh, were, uh, they were never brought back to the council.
And, and both councilmen Sanders and Atkins were on this, so they, they're probably well versed in this. And I guess we could tap into their, their brains as well, too.
It'd be good to have, we have a refresher. It's been a little while for, for me as well.
Okay.
I think it'd be fine to see the goals that were set, actually not formally set, but were presented. Uh, however, I think for us to adopt goals with seven weeks to go to a, the election would be a little premature.
I agree.
I think we could discuss the goals and maybe get some feedback, but I don't think as a council, we should adopt those goals until after November.
I agree.
Okay. What happens, do we have things turn up?
Okay. All right.
Can I add to that?
Please.
Um, I, and I agree with you, but there's something else I would like us to add to all of this. And that would be very simply some form of, I can't think of the word, policy. Not, policy maybe not be the right word. In other words, every two years after the new council is seated, since we have that, cause it's always in December, um, a review of what the current plan is so that the new council then knows, the incoming council then knows what the, what the previous council had set. And then you have some time to digest it, maybe go, "Okay, so in January, let's have a meeting and, you know, are we on course? Do we want to maybe veer off this way?" And that way, it doesn't ever fall through the cracks again. So I would like to, to make it, you know, set it so that it's so.
Well, that's, uh, that's particularly important with goals. And, I mean, if there is a, a desire to change the mission, vision, values, that's something that could be considered too. But, uh, you, uh, generally speaking, it, it would be the goals because those are your, what, what's your, your, uh, that, what you're hoping to achieve in a, in a specific period of time.
Right. We just don't have a, a policy pertaining to that. So I'd like us to set one so that this doesn't happen again.
I just think how, how much I yearned for this and didn't realize what it was, I didn't know. And so I appreciate you sharing that with me and then bringing it to all of us. Okay, so we are on to our next item, which is public comment. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time pursuant to the Brown Act. The city council may not take, act on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. A public comment such as on the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name.
Stan Rettora. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, just as, little quick comment on, uh, the past subject that just you were discussing. There was a good deal of work done earlier this year, or maybe it was late last year now regarding economic development. That actually expanded more than just economic development goals of all kinds. Since there was such mu-, so much work put into that, it might be nice to try to integrate things from that work into, uh, the goals that were looked at three years ago, cause there might be some new ideas, uh, that came out of that effort. And, and also I'd like to comment that I haven't, there was supposedly a East Kern Economic Development Group started, um, out of the county, I believe, for a number of cities, uh, uh, on the eastern Kern side that was supposed to be doing some economic development. And I haven't heard a word, um, about that for months.
They had their last meeting in Mojave.
Yeah. They keep having meetings in Mojave and, and everywhere else except I, you know, my problem is.
I'll make sure you get on their agenda.
Thing on Ridgcrest.
Yep. I will make sure you're on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
Ronald Porter, Madam Mayor, met honorable council members. Uh, I stepped up today because it's U.S. Constitution Week and I think we have to, we should have some presentation on that at the council meeting. We are all honored and blessed to have our founders put forth such a blessed document for us that covered so many things. Unfortunately, today we have too many people declaring the document to be outdated. Uh, they're declaring the document to be a living document. The constitution is not a living document nor is outdated. Everything that's in it was, is as viable today as it was when it was written. The people that want to call it a living document want to change it. The, our constitution was based on two primary factors, primarily human nature. And that human nature being that anyone in power will always seek more power. It was intended to limit the power and control the power of the federal government. Uh, if anyone needs to understand government, there's a great book to be read and it's The Law by Frederick Boustead. Wonderful, you'll enjoy it. And he defines government as pilferers. Someone that always wants to take more money and move, use that money for their own benefit or their own desires. The United States, we have the usurpation of our constitution on a regular basis. There's enumerated, enumerated powers in Article Two, which they've excerpted and, and expanded upon in tremendous number of ways. The greatest number of ways that they have done it in recent history is through bribery and blackmail. And that bribery and blackmail consists of when they produce or hand down federal money and say, "In order to get this money, you have to do this or you have to control. I'm going to buy you an ice cream, but you have to eat the flavor of my choice." And they use that to usurp the United States constitution to bring power and control on local governments. And I'm not talking about this on top of all of them. And by doing so, they, they force them into either long-term agreements or long-term processes that they must comply with. Or they use it the other way is they become addicted to the money. When the states and the, and the counties and the cities take this money, they become addictive. And then they don't know what to do without it. I, I hope I don't go over my time and let me know if I do, I'm not trying to do that. We just need to, everyone needs to sit down and read this document. It's truly a wonderful document and understand it. I'm a very knowledgeable person on it, but every time I read it with it, when it's applied a little different fashion, I learn something. You have to learn what they said and why. Unfortunately, we use terms in the document, an example that we use modern terminology to define them and we have to use the original terminology and what the words meant when they were written. A prime example is to impeach an executive branch officer. The, the constitution says high crimes and misdemeanors. Misdemeanors at the time was, had a meaning of basically, uh, malfeasance in office. It didn't actually mean a crime when they used it. Basically just bad behavior. So you have to look at their, their, their real meaning and intent. Like I said, it was about human nature. How much do we want to control? That you continually hear that say, "Well, we have three, uh, separate but equal branches of the government," which is absolutely wrong. We actually only had, the, the three branches were designed to be three different levels of power with the, the legislative branch being the most powerful, then the executive and then the judicial being the least powerful. The one thing that, that our founders gave us that's probably the most precious of all is the vote. And everyone says, "Well, you can't change Washington. You can't change Washington." The reason that we have a two-year cycle on congressmen is because they said, "We want you to be able to throw them all out in one cycle." This is the power we want the people to have. And that's a very important issue. That's one way that if, if it comes, what I call the peaceful revolution, that's one way the people can say, "We had enough of Washington not listening to us." I could go on, but I want to thank you all for listening. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other?
Ron, I'm sorry. Ron, before you run away, I'm sorry, the author of the book was Frederick, what was the last name?
Boustead or Boustead. I'll send you an email.
D-A-S-T-I-A-T.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can never remember how to spell his name.
Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, Steve Matthews. Thank you, Ron. Save me a few words. Uh, the young lady from the daughter of the American Revolution said, urges everybody to read it. And I just gave her a good thumbs up. The one thing that slipped my mind when I was up here, when the admiral was taking his comments and whatnot, was the, probably one of the more important ones that he mentioned, and that is the broadband committee and, uh, high-speed internet. I don't know why I forgot that because I spent most of the day trying to decide or figure out what the hell was wrong with my internet. It was not very responsive at all. I mean, when I say not responsive, it was like I did a, clicked a, a button or something and gave up and clicked another button. And then after I clicked the second button, the first button's finally decided to come up. But, um, we probably should urge them to see if, and, and we can do this, actually, I don't want to wait for the, for the broadband committee to do this. I'd rather the individuals or maybe the mayor or somebody, maybe I'll even see if I can get a email off to the admiral, but I would like the base to urge, urge the base to see or at least put a letter of intent that they would like to see a broadband, uh, more broadband connections here in the valley. And maybe that would have a little bit more influence than some of the other stuff that we've already tried. And the reason I say that is because when I finally decided I was going to call Frontier to help them or actually complain and, and help have them help me see what was going on, the young man said that, "Well, I see by the map or a map or something here that here in an area that Frontier has highlighted, uh, as something they're working on," so to speak. And I said, "Well, is that just my neighborhood or what's the, what's the incentive of the area?" And he says, "It's the whole city." So there, we seem to be on their radar, but they don't seem to be working very fast, I don't think. And anything that individually you can do, if you have a problem, you're with them and you have a problem, call them up and complain. Don't just sit there and, and wait for it to resolve itself. Anyway, that's, that's that. The other thing was that I thought I would certainly hear Mr. Stan, uh, Rettora here come up here and see since, especially since Captain Wiley mentioned water as one of his priorities, that maybe he could urge the Navy to get on the ball and help us get this new sewer plant and the tertiary treatment going. But anyway, those are still things that we can mention to them. And there was a couple other things, but, you know, with the internet, it really wore me out today. So I'll let it go at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Mrs. Ferris?
Thank you, Pat Ferris. Uh, at my age, um, maybe I'm getting more, um, serious about making things count because life goes by so fast. And, um, I'm, I'm, I'm bringing that up because, uh, I don't want to be overly exercised in some of these thoughts, but with our, uh, it was wonderful to have our military people here, the admiral and, and the commander. But I've been here a long time and I'm not criticizing people. I think we have wonderful command. I just, I think we've had wonderful leadership on the, in the Navy, the best. But I think there's a serious need for more cohesion. How we get there, I'm not sure, but we need to think about that. Because the kinds of things that were said tonight about how we need to work together with the community, I mean, we've been talking about, you wouldn't want to know how many meetings over the years I've been in, out there on the station and here about how we make this happen to work better with the community. And, um, the only two things I remember really having partnerships in, and I don't, Peggy, you may remember this, a few years ago, we used to have a cleanup for the whole valley. And that we partnered with the Navy because they furnished the hot dogs. And that was the big partnership we did with the Navy and the city. Now, we do have a, a wonderful partnership in the Parade of a Thousand Flags. And I think it speaks so beautifully of, of how the community and it, it sets the, the picture, the real statement of how we are one community. And I think that's really positive. the real statement of how we are one community, and I think that's really positive. But we kind of dance around a lot of things, and I don't know how we solve this. I don't know how you set up more committees and have more meetings, but we're not, we're just not, we're just not connecting in so many ways. And I don't know, I just think we need to figure out a way. I do like Margot, their new public affairs person, I think she's willing to, she was so helpful with the parade, and has grew up here, seems very committed to the community. That's one thing, we need to find a way to connect better. We kind of talk about these things, but we don't connect. Another thing I was kind of curious about, about setting high goals with, I mean, these things that the city manager read tonight, and they were new to me, too. How, I know a lot of time must have been spent putting all this together. How does something like this fall through the cracks where there's no, when there's not continuity, or is that important? I mean, Peggy was surprised that this existed and...
I think, I think what the idea was, was to give us a chance to get on our feet here, the three of us, and it was going to come through. How, why it didn't, I guess it doesn't really matter why it didn't, only that it doesn't just end here. I want to see something come of it, no matter what happens in November. I think we all have to have our fingers on it. I kept thinking how much better I could be had I known those things. And I'm not going to point fingers. We're just going to go on from here and make us all better, because we can learn from each other. And Pat, you and I, you and I have served on many committees together. We've talked about many different items in the whole entire community. And I think what it is, is an actual intention of more than talk, to make that talk turn into action. And that is where I think all of us fall short, because we think we've got an understanding, and we walk away and find out your understanding was a little different than mine, and my understanding was a little bit different from yours, and different areas of the community. And we look and we say, "You know what? We're not going to let it happen. Not going to let it happen." It is, we can be better. We can do more.
And I'm taking up too much time, probably, but I also was thinking about the economic development piece of this, brought up about the meetings in Mojave and that setup, and it sounded so promising. And many of you here sat on those, in those meetings, there were ten committees or something like that, and we spent hours and hours and hours and wrote reports and wrote reports. But I will tell you, it wasn't fair what happened to Beth Summers. I think we really threw her under the bus with this casino thing coming up. And she was out there working and going to these meetings and thought she was working toward real economic development. And then this was sprung on her. And I think something needs to be fixed about that.
Beth brought her report, Pat, to answer you. Beth was not thrown under the bus by any means. She brought a report back to the East Kern Economic Development Corporation, went to two meetings in California City, she and other members of the community. And the last meeting was in, I think it was Roseman, was that it? And our new chair, the new chair of the committee now is Gary Parsons. And all of us are participating in it. If it isn't getting around, we'll have to find out why. But there was not anything. In fact, Beth came to me and said, "Do you mind if I give this to this group, my report, because they can accomplish more than she can, or that the balance of the committee could on their own?"
That may be true, but I think, I think there are people who were committed to that in a very definite way. And then I think we ended up trying to go down two paths that would not converge.
I don't know about the two paths. I don't know. I'm sorry. Okay. Is there any other public comment? Okay. Now it's time for council announcements. Anybody?
I have none.
Eddie?
Reminder that this veteran stand-down is Friday, and I think my smart city stuff can wait till the end.
I have none.
I just want to say thank you to the International Diversity Committee, who put on an event that was probably one of the best events I've ever seen. It doesn't take over any of the other events, but it was a 420, I walked in there thinking we were going to see maybe 30 or 40 people. I'll tell you, Yolanda Alexander, Matthew Alexander, Bob Peoples, and Mary Peoples, got 425 people out there, eating for free, talking to each other, learning from each other. And it was an astounding event. I am so very proud of what that committee did. And all it did was a suggestion was made, "Why don't we look and see how we can be better together? How our diversity makes us stronger?" And that's what came. It was wonderful. I'm very proud of that, what they did. And they're going to do it again next year. Okay. No other council comment? I'm going to go to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by city staff and will be approved in one motion if no member of the council or the public wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, that item may be removed from the consent calendar and be considered separately with public comment before action is taken. Item number four, proposed action to approve a resolution of the City of Richcrest Ridge Runner Transit authorizing federal funding under Federal Transit Administration, Section 5339, with the California Department of Transportation authorizing the matching funds of $20,563,000, and authorize the city manager, Dennis Spear, or his designee to execute all documents to obtain FTA F339 funding. Number five, proposed action to approve a resolution to accept funding from the Transit System Safety, Security, and Disaster Response Account under the California Transit Security Grant Program for the City Hall Security Fencing Project, and authorize the city manager, Dennis Spear, or his designee to execute all documents to attain F, I'm sorry, CTSGP funding. Number six, proposed action to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a notice of completion of the corporate yard site improvements, authorizing city clerk to file a notice of completion and authorizing the release of retention in the amount of $46,940.13, 35 days after recording of the notice of completion. Number seven, proposed action to approve a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Humane Society of the construction of a cat room and the Richcrest Animal Shelter. Number eight, proposed action to approve draft minutes of the City of Richcrest Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority Housing Authority, meeting date September 7. Is there anybody on the council that would like to pull any item?
I'd like to pull number four and five.
Number four?
And number five.
And number five. Any others? Anybody from public would like to pull any item?
Number seven, please.
Number seven.
Number six.
Number six. We are going to then, a motion to approve item number eight?
Move.
Second. Councilmember Maurer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders?
Aye.
All approve.
Okay, item number four, Mr. Spear. And if you would, who had that one, Jim, if you would, if you're concerned?
Yeah, I was just, well, one, the number, I guess the cost of a city bus kind of set me back a little bit. Is that, is that pretty standard?
Or larger buses have been costing around $140,000.
Wow.
Just to put that in perspective, at KernCog several months ago, they had a presentation on the energy-efficient buses, and they were $900 and some thousand dollars each.
Yep.
Holy cow.
Yeah. I ordered three of them. I thought we could use it.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah. We'll save a lot of money that way. I guess I just want to express a concern that I have with, when, I mean, I get, I get the whole system. We have, we get street funding by implementing this transit district, and without that, some of that funding goes away.
That's correct.
But, I mean, our ridership is just really, really low.
That's correct.
And I just have a really hard time continuing to spend money on that, that system, when our ridership is so low. I'm just wondering if it's appropriate at some point to have a conversation about the costs and the benefits of that system, and just have a frank conversation as to whether or not it's worth it to continue doing it.
Well, as far as the system itself, well, there's two explanations, I guess. One is we're required to have a transit system, not just to receive TDA funds, but to be eligible for even the program projects through KernCog. So it's kind of a, it's sort of a mandatory thing.
It's for all the project funding?
That's correct. That's correct. If you don't have a transit...
I thought it was just TDA.
Well, TDA specifically works that way, but to be eligible for the other programs, you have to have a transit system in place, too.
It goes back to what Ron Porter said.
Yeah.
The state and federal government say we can have ice cream, but they're only allowing us to have vanilla or chocolate.
Right.
But the other half of that conversation is the fact that we were put in this position because, well, our ridership being low when we used to do a demand response, where we just, we operated buses very similar, they were smaller buses, but they operated very much like taxi service, but was fully subsidized. And we were paying, I think at one point, in terms of our ridership and having to operate the buses, it was, it was a pretty expensive ride, the way we're doing it. And so KernCog, though, they're the ones that retained consultants to first to do a study for the community to find out what they felt was a better way. And so they took us, I mean, it was at their direction. They wanted us to move forward away from demand response, because they're you're selling time and not selling space. They felt that if they could get us on a system where we could have multiple riders on the bus, as opposed to transporting one person at a time, it would improve. And in terms of the cost effectiveness, our ridership still is low. That's true. So, I mean, it's something that I can discuss with, Bob Snoddy is actually the person that we speak directly to at KernCog, but I could ask him if we can, since we're now, see, they gave us, because of their, the way they've set up a program, they gave us X number of years to implement the system we have now, which is a deviated fixed route. And they, they basically looked aside at whether we were making fare box, because they gave us a period of time. Then we made some changes to it, which gave us another year or so. Well, this is the first year, as you recall, in the budget, we had to actually put in the $60,000 of our money, so to speak, in order to make that hold, because they, KernCog itself got in trouble because they were, they were allowing all the systems as an aggregate to show their fare box. And so that would appear to the state that we were making our fare box. So we never had to do this before, even though we weren't. Well, when the auditors came down and asked in more detail and more depth, they asked KernCog, "Wait a minute. We're seeing here that many of your cities are not making the fare box, but you're showing that they are. They need to pay the difference, you know, out of their general fund." And so KernCog got caught, because they were told by the state auditors, "You can't aggregate all your systems and then look at how much, what the revenue is," and saying, "Yes, you're making your fare box." And so this is the first year that we actually had to pay, I think it was $60,000. But it's, it's, we're paying $60,000 to get 1.2 million. About $400,000, is going to streets of that 1.2 million. So I will ask Bob, at what point is he receptive to us either reverting to back what we had?
Yeah.
Which was, I believe we were up to about $165 a ride. We were subsidizing people, if you took our ridership and the cost of our vehicles and the cost of our drivers.
Right.
My last year on KernCog, there was two cities that made the fare box.
That sounds about right.
Two, two.
Go ahead.
I know that I, we had asked about being able to use the cabs, and I know that I talked to at least one of them to contact. Has there been any movement on that? Is there anything that might be more helpful there, or is it worse?
Well, because of ADA issues, it's something that just typically isn't feasible. Unless you have cab companies, they're going to run vans.
Well, they will.
Plus, talking to KernCog, they are not, the cab drivers are not held to the same standards that the, that our bus drivers are.
The pull-out program.
They have to go through tests and everything else, but the cab companies don't.
Okay, so then my question goes to the medical transport, because they do have to go through and have all the training, and they will have the ADA bans. So at that point, is it something you want to revisit?
Medical transport?
Uh-huh. It's a cab, it's run by the cabs, is what I do. But, I'm not talking about for me. But it's run by the same thing, but you have to go through all kinds of training and have your CPR and first aid and your Department of Transportation training and all of that kind of stuff.
So you're not talking about Liberty Ambulances?
No, 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 no. I'm not.
That'll be a very expensive ride.
No.
I don't know. It's kind of on par with what we're paying right now.
Our clerk wants to speak.
Speaking from the risk management side, one of the largest issues is that the drivers of the taxis are not required to do the drug and alcohol training or testing, whereas we are. And it becomes a liability for the city if there's an accident.
That's why the medical is required.
Right.
So that's a difference there. So if that would help at all. And like I said, they're going to do the ADA. So it's not too much difference, because it's, was owned by the same person, now it's just split into two. So, but it might be something, because he's willing to work with it and see what he can do to help the city. And like I said, was, you have an opportunity to go talk and see if it'll work. Because I'll have to step out. I'm just an employee, but still, I know I'll have to step out of that discussion.
I don't know. I just feel like I have to hold my nose every time I vote for something on the transit. And it, I get that it's, I don't know. I don't know what the right thing to do here is, but it's just, it's very frustrating for me.
I had the same feeling back in the 80s when we went through this. It was the same way then, you know?
Yeah. So I...
But you look at the benefits of the dollars that you receive for doing that. The benefits are, you can't replace them anyway, certainly not with our dollars. I see no way of us being able to come up with multi-millions of dollars to do and receive those benefits.
Well, and that's, that's one thing I really don't understand right now, is what is the total cost, not just, not just of the city, but as a taxpayer, what's the total cost of the system versus what do we get as a city? And I think we do get more than goes into it. I know we do.
A whole lot.
I don't know. I'm just wondering if there's, there's alternatives out there that's going to be a little more effective. And I would, I'd be in favor of putting off, buying a new bus to find alternatives and working with KernCog to find alternatives that are more effective, because our ridership is just really, really low, and it's not paying off.
He did talk about that a little bit when he was here, because he talked about Uber. I hate to say that word. I mean, I love what they do. But he did talk about that, and I noticed, it was in one of our emails from the league, I believe, on that very topic of the transit, with the Uber ridership and all of that, kind of replacing some of the traditional.
Yeah.
Maybe something. But in that case, we may lose our grant funding. I mean, they may find another way to use our money where we can't get it.
What is the timeline on this grant funding, Mr. Spear?
I don't actually know as far as whether it's timed right now, that you, whether you have to vote tonight. I don't believe it is.
Okay. So that's, that's what I'm proposing. I'd like to wait on that one until we can have a discussion.
Because we are replacing a 10-year-old bus.
Right.
Well, I think it's going to take us, if we're going to totally change the transit... -the transit system, I think it's gonna take us longer than we have to do this. So I, I would, you know, we have, gotta hear public comment, too, but I would propose we proceed with fi- four and five. I like your suggestion of looking at alternative ways, and, and, although when the rep from Kern Cog was over here when we were doing the transit needs, he didn't come up with any other suggestions.
I know that was, uh, at, um, at, at Kern Cog, that was a topic of discussion by many of the cities who are asking, is there another way to do it? And there, I mean, the process is set up.
That's correct.
It is the way it is, and you can either participate or not, but to give up, to, to give up that amount of money, it seems, it seems, oh, the benefit is clearly much greater than what we spend, the monies we get back. And it isn't like there's a lot of other people out there willing to hand us money because we're nice people. It is the process. And there was no alternatives, nobody had any alternatives over there. I, Mike, you've been this year, have you heard any, anything else?
Like I say, the one alternative was a nine hundred thousand dollar bus.
Yeah.
I don't know how a city can afford that.
Okay, is there, Stan, I'm thinking you're coming up to speak.
Good evening again. I, I've objected to this transit thing multiple times, standing here, and, and I, I understand that our hands are tied, um, if we want this money that we first gave to the state so they can give it back to us with strings attached. And, and I, I doubt if Kern Cog has a lot of flexibility either, uh, but it seems to me that if there are multiple cities that are in the same boat, and there's other people objecting, then one of the rights that we have is to try to change the system. I don't think there's, you know, to, to, to make something happen in the next three, four months, uh, probably not gonna happen, but it may be that if enough cities in Kern Cog object to it, um, uh, they're probably in the same boat we are, maybe we actually can change the system, and it's not gonna happen in a matter of months, but maybe over a matter of a year or two, you know, so that we don't have this discussion again two or three years from now. It may be that, you know, we actually can do something if we get together and, and there's enough people at Kern Cog that r- really dislike it as much as we do, because it, it doesn't make sense. I mean, that's the real issue, is it doesn't make sense. So we're doing something that doesn't make sense, because we want this other money that we think is free, even though it's our tax money they're giving back to us. So I would encourage, um, not, not necessarily not to, to pass this tonight, 'cause I don't see any point that anything's gonna happen, but, but that doesn't mean that we can't object and push our objection up and try to get others to push it up, and who knows, maybe we can actually get something done in the state, thank you.
It, it'll take more than Kern Cog, though, it'll take league, take the league of California cities, Kern Cog alone could not do it.
Oh, yeah.
But it, but it affects every city in the state, every, every-
I appreciate that, thank you. You're ahead.
Ron Porter, very quick. Uh, Mr. Mauer, I agree with you, this has been a hard tablet ever since it picked up, and I remember when you didn't like it. Uh, my suggestion would be that you go to and say, what's the minimum standards or, or what's the process that we have, what, what's the goal here that we have to meet? And if someone wants to address it in the future, if they come back, you meet these and we're happy. That way you can put it out to anyone you want, say, any suggestions that meets these goals, and you don't waste a lot of time and energy on it. Otherwise, like I said, we're between a rock and hard spot, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any direction from the council?
Jim was, this was concerning four and five, both?
No, just four.
Four.
I got a different question for five.
You got a diff- okay.
Yeah.
I move to approve item four.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Can I ask one quick question before we vote?
Sure.
Um, is this, is this allocated in the budget right now?
Oh, yes it is.
Okay.
Councilmember Mauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sanders?
Shelley, hold my nose first.
Go ahead.
Um, aye.
I'll approve.
Okay, item number five, I think that's one, Jim, you also asked to be polled, correct?
Yeah, uh, correct. Um, just reading through this, I didn't quite understand, it, this, I'm gonna refresh my memory here, this wasn't to build a fence, correct?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay, so where exactly is the fence going to be placed?
Well, it's actually part of a broader project, but, uh, this money was available through the, um, uh, as far as it'd be, uh, being a security pro- project, but it would be the fence, uh, directly north of City Hall here, it would actually, it, it has it, uh, and what it would do is it would enclose, uh, the area where our transit buses, uh, congregated in the morning, but we also have our police cars there, we also have some of the, some public, uh, works vehicles there, but it's to secure that area.
Okay, so when I read transit buses, I'm thinking where they normally park to pick up passengers in the front of the-
No, it's, it's-
Out there, that's not what we're talking about?
No, uh, first thing in the morning, they, they use the car gate on the north side of the, uh, of the, of the building.
They can fit in there?
Back where the police cars are parked, is that what you're talking about?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, and so this is just to complete the fence?
It's gonna be larger than it is now.
Okay, so yeah-
The footprint's gonna be larger.
As you say, I, with all the other vehicles in there, I don't know how you get the buses in there.
So it's gonna be a larger area?
That's correct.
And how much more secure is it gonna be?
Well, it, it, it would, uh, the, the intent is, is that's going to, uh, keep cars that currently, uh, that, that currently ingress, egress, uh, as if that's a road back there, uh, that fence would actually extend beyond the alleyway, uh, or the drive, if you will, to the north part of this building right now. Uh, and, and it would also, uh, be secured to, to prevent folks from wandering through there, because right now, anybody can wander through that lot.
That's how we park and wander in for city council.
For golly gee.
Yeah, this is part of a, uh, of a larger project. We have impact funding as well as a, uh, a DOJ or BJA grant that you folks approved about six weeks ago, so this is the second grant that's gonna be combined with impact funding to secure our back lot. Um, we're going to, uh, put gates there on the, the entryway there off of Warner Street, so it'll be blocked off, so we'll have a gate on one side, gate on the other, we'll expand it out, so then we can have secured parking for the police as well as for the transit buses. And we're also gonna be putting, uh, uh, secure, so.
So we would, we would not be able to access City Hall?
Well, you would be, 'cause you're a council member, we give you a code to the gate, but it wouldn't be open to the public anymore.
So right now, there's a lot of-
As a non-council member, general contractor, I would not be able to access City Hall from that area.
Correct, you'd have to come in through, uh, by Parks and Rec, over a little bit further south on Warner Street.
Okay.
Correct, we're the front of the building.
Is there any other questions on that, number five?
So right now, there's, there's a lot of public parking along where the trees, the tree line is, is that-
That would be enclosed also.
That's enclosed as well?
Yeah, primarily that parking to city employees.
As you say, I assume that city employees are parking, I don't know who else would park.
Yeah, I mean, right now, especially with the closure of the jail, we have a lot more, uh, activity, movement of prisoners, it's, it's significantly more important that we, uh, secure that area, as well as, you know, we've been fairly lucky, uh, with having basically a wide-open parking lot back there with our police officers coming and going, so there is a significant security risk there that we need to address as employers for our employees.
Now, originally, when that fence was built, it was secure, uh, it used to, well, it used to have a gate to get in-
Had an arm that went up, but it was never really secure for people.
Yeah, it had the little things, and if you backed up from the exit, you popped your tires, you know, that's, over the years, it's gone, so, but there were still ways to walk through it.
Yeah, we need, uh, in all frankness, we do need to secure it. Uh, we're one of very few municipalities and sh- or sheriff's departments that, uh, have an unsecured area for their public safety.
Yeah, when, um, when I went and visited McKay, when he was working in Scottsdale, Arizona, they had a covered parking lot and they changed the code every month, so if you were a police officer this month and not next month, you didn't know the new code. That, that's how secure their, their area was, so.
Yes.
Any other council comment? Okay, public comment?
Well, actually, most of the questions I had, well, most questions that I had, basically, were the same. Um, I would like to see a plan for it before, because there's a couple of suggestions I think I can make for it, uh, which, which my biggest question, what's the plan for it? There's some, a little more secu- there's a little more technology out that might make it even better than, than what's, I've heard here, and I would just like the opportunity to speak on it, thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Scottley, he, uh, I would like to, uh, speak out and ask that the council, uh, carefully consider this. Uh, I read one thing where somebody was complaining about cars speeding by on that alleyway. Now, I have not personally seen that, but I use that alleyway. That alleyway is very convenient, because I go to the Eagles, and so we bop over to the Eagles Club, uh, going that way. And I'm just wondering if this council might be able to get your security concerns taken care of by securing the existing lot with a proper gate or whatever, but still allow public that access. I know there's a lot of people that use it to go over to Motion Tire, use it to go over to the Senior Center, it's an alleyway, and, you know, I, I, anyway, I'm just expressing my view on that, so I, you know, I just wanted to get it out there, that I think that there are gonna be people that are very disappointed, because now, you go to the Bank of America, you cannot go downtown, you have to go right, and previously, we've been able to go in and duck through the Ba- Bank of America's alleyway and bop up, and you can go to the Eagles, the Senior Center, Motion Tire, or downtown. Uh, and this is going to completely change that, and if it's done in the nature of security, I'm just wondering if, can we not achieve that same goal by simply securing the compound and leaving us the alleyway? Thank you.
Uh, two comments on that, um, what, what we'd have to do if this goes through is, if you go down the alleyway from Bank of America, you'd have to go around south of, uh, Kern McGee Center and back onto the street. Uh, I know that, uh, Mike Myers told me before he retired, that they've had several near misses of police officers back there with people zooming through that alleyway.
Okay.
And that was his, that's why, you know, they put a sign up, it's not a, it's not a through road anymore.
Yeah, I saw that, I took it as a suggestion.
Yeah. Well, since everybody took it as a suggestion, they're suggesting we fence it off.
Okay, all right. Well, anyway, I'll just say, for my, for my own sake, I creep through there so that I, I don't alarm anybody, I don't wanna alarm anybody.
I was just backing out the other day, back there, and there was somebody coming through there, and we almost had a, a back head-on, because I wasn't looking for someone coming that fast through there, and that, they were probably going thirty-five miles an hour, forty miles an hour.
That's way too fast.
Way too fast. Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, Dave Matthews. I want everybody to note, note this date, because I never thought I would tend to agree with Scott Leahy. But I, too, use the alleyway. And the reason, one of the reasons I use it is because I did a, a, um, Google Earth route location, and from my house to the City Hall out in front, that was the shortest route to get here. And I'm always for efficiency, so that's the way I come. I've never saw, seen anybody go through there, hardly ever, when I'm going through, so, and with the jiggle and jaggle and you have to go through to get there, I certainly take my time. Okay, thank you.
Some people don't, though.
Yeah.
I've been, I've been, I've been monitoring it since nineteen eighty-nine, and there are some significant issues with that, that need to be addressed.
Is this, um, something, I mean, right now, we're just approving the, the grant, acceptance of the grant funding, right?
That, when it's available, yes.
Correct, yeah.
When it's available? Are we gonna talk about the, the actual project of this later on?
The design will, uh, planning will assist with the design.
We're, we're actually securing funding now, but, uh, the, uh, I know PD is working with, uh, Public Works to procure design.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is a, there is a design, there is the thought of, of going a little bit into the park to be able to expand it out, to be able to po- park, uh, park some of our emergency operation vehicles.
I think what Jim's saying is, is, well, we have a chance to look at the design before it gets put in.
Right.
We can bring it back to infrastructure, let you guys take a look at it.
Okay. That, that would allow for public comment also.
I'm just kinda wondering if it wouldn't be solved with, you know, some, some really nice speed bumps?
You have to understand, you have, you have-
Take someone out with forty miles an hour.
Yeah, you have police vehicles that are coming in out there all day long, uh, we have enough of an issue with suspension, without having to go over that twenty times a day.
Our roads give you a good, give your cars a good workout.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's an inconvenience to the community that's gotten used to using that, um, that access area, it is city property, has been-
It was never intended as-
It was never intended to be that way, it's been signed off, and people ignore it, and, and I think we do have a little bit of responsibility to secure our property for our employees.
Right.
Okay, action?
I'll make a motion to approve item number five.
Second.
Councilmember Mauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sanders?
Aye.
I'll approve.
Okay, who asked item six to be polled? Okay.
Uh, let's see, this is the city yard, right?
Correct.
Uh, are we gonna have, the only question I was wondering is, are we gonna have a ribbon cutting or something, so everybody can see what's go- what happened?
With the completion of the bus garage, even though technically they're two separate projects, they kinda dovetail the, it together.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
I assume the bus garage is not included, since it's only half-built.
Okay, any other public comment, any other council comment?
I move approval of s- number six.
Second.
Councilmember Mauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sanders?
Aye.
I'll approve.
Item number seven, who asked for that to be polled? Okay, Ron?
Ron, what do you have against cats?
It wasn't a dog room! No. Actually, my question, I have no problem with it, with what they're doing, it, my, my question, I, and excuse me, because I forgot the number that they set aside to pay for the design, but I thought it was, uh, a little extensive, because-
Yeah.
We're talking, I think they said six hundred square feet of room, and-
Eight hundred and sixty-two.
Okay. But I thought, that's a, that's an awful lot of money to pay for a single story, that everything's, has to be done by code, it, I could sit down and design one by code in, in, in no time at all, and I'm not a, an engineer, one of our engineers should be able to draw that up in a matter of a couple hours with all the specs on it, and for the amount of money they had that's coming out of our tax dollars to draw that up, I thought was a little extensive, and that's, that was my concern, thank you.
The hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not your tax dollars, it's a donation from Indian Wells Valley Humane Society.
Is the eight thousand two hundred and seventy for the design?
That's what I'm talking about.
Oh, that's also money that was recycled, recycled through the Humane Society as part of our solar project we did out there last year, they, they returned the money back to us, donated it back.
Well, my just, it was just the money for the design, I thought was a little high.
Actually, that's a very good price that we got for that, when you're looking at a commercial building. Trust me, we looked.
Well, you got ripped off.
Maybe so, but that's less than market rate.
I remember twenty-five years ago, a, a little restroom in a park was a hundred I remember 25 years ago, a little restroom in a park was $100,000.
Yeah.
Not, not the design, but the construction.
Well, most of my questions have been answered, but I was wondering, is this part of the existing building, or is it a separate building?
It's improvement and expansion of existing.
Yeah, we're going to be expanding the cat room. We're going to be adding a, an additional room as well as a storage closet.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other comments from council? Motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Mauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders.
Aye.
All approve.
Okay, the next item.
Number nine.
Um, Mr. Seelander, I understand you have that.
What do, Mother Mayor? We put this on the agenda, take, take a step back. The Brown Act provides in part that we need to, the city needs to describe in certain ways how we put on agenda items for closed session and open session. They have safe harbor language for closed session, they also have a provision saying that it has to either be the safe harbor language or something that substantially complies with, with that, or is similar enough. Now, typically, that's not an, an issue, we are pretty good at being, complying with that, but the, this is here because a, the public brought it to our attention that, one, there's a potential, well, there is a deficiency in the closed session agenda item pertaining to real property negotiations. We looked into it after that allegation came up, and the public was absolutely correct. There is, it's not perfect. So, we would like to bring this in front of the, the city council to ask two things, and these are pursuant to a cure section of Government Code Section 54-960.1. So, we're asking that the city council is requested to cure or correct this issue by directing the city manager to amend city's practice going forward so that closed session agenda items pertaining to real property negotiations contain four things. One is property identification in form of a street address, APN, or other unique reference. The second is the names of the real property negotiators. The third one, and I think this is the one that wasn't included all the time, is the names of the negotiating parties, not just the negotiators. And fourth, whether the property price, terms of payment, or both are nego, under negotiation. So, we're asking the city council to, to direct city staff to put that on the agenda in the future. And the second item is, which is also statutory requirement when you cure these types of things, we're asking the city council to direct the city manager to inform the members of the public who complained about this issue of the city's remedial actions in writing. So, those are the two items we're asking the city council to approve.
Okay, is there any questions from council? Any questions from the public?
I think they should have done it sooner.
Yeah.
I think that should have been expanded on.
Yeah, I didn't, I mean, did, so.
I think this is Mr. Porter and Mr. Neal were the two that brought it up, right?
Yes. I didn't, I apologize, I didn't quite understand your last, you said one last thing in a very short sentence, and I didn't quite understand it.
So, there's two things the city needs to do. The second one is to write the letter to the complaining party in this kind of time, this case, Mr. Neal, explaining exactly what the city did and how we're curing this, so, so he gets notice in writing.
Right. But you said one thing right after that, and I didn't catch it.
No, that, that was it.
Okay. My problem with, and it does need to be cured, but the first thing is, the Brown Act was written and intended, it's, it's a sunshine law, to allow the people to be informed, at least briefly, so that they have an idea of what's on the agendas, which means that while you don't have to fully explain what you're going to discuss, it has to be enough that they can make a determination whether or not they want to look further into it. In property, it's kind of an interesting fact under the, the rule, which is to be always interpreted in the people's favor and never the government's favor because it's a sunshine law. The only thing that they're allowed to discuss in closed session is, is the price and terms. And, and that's, that's the negotiators, they have to identify the negotiators. But the Brown Act also requires that they have a full and open public meeting prior to that about the sale or, or acquisition of property. And that didn't occur either. But my biggest concern is this, when people bring up Brown Act considerations to the, or they say this is a Brown Act violation, it's been the history of this council to ignore that, and, and do we have to, citizens, rather than be able to talk and say this is a Brown Act violation, do we have to just write it, complain, or, or a cure and correct letter all the time to, to have our, our voices be heard on this issue? And that's what it's come to. I, I see numerous violations. Even, even at the last meeting, I talked about violations of the Brown Act regarding the closed session announcement. The important part is, the people have the right to be informed and, and the information, and I think we just need to look a little harder at that. This came about because, one, we didn't have the prior meeting, one, we didn't make these discussions. It would be nice to have a prior meeting on the sale, there's, I, excuse me for, don't get mad at me for saying this, we, there's one on the agenda tonight, but I would like to, you know, what's the value of this property? Who do you want to have negotiate? It'd be nice to be able to discuss that so that we can inform the council before they go address their terms and conditions. Thank you.
Mr. Matthews?
Address the general allegation of, of Brown Act violation. Well, I mean, we, we, we appreciate the, the public's input, and we do look into it every time it comes up. Mr. Porter shakes his head. But we don't always report back because 19 times out of 20, it's incorrect, they have no merit. This time it did, and we appreciate that, and we bring it out in the open, and we, we have a cure for it, according to the statute.
I, I do have one question on that, when he was talking about the meeting prior, so can we discuss that?
Yeah, I was going to ask about that as well.
I am, I'm not sure. I know that these, this, by, this specific alleged violation that Mr. Neal came up with, there was no harm done in that case because there was no action taken. So, if you don't take any action, there's nothing that triggers, there's no action to be void, voided, so.
But Mr. Porter just brought up the meeting prior to, before we ever go into negotiations.
Prior to negotiations.
Um, prior to. I, I'd not heard that nor seen that anywhere.
Have you been prior to negotiations?
I, I don't know, but that's what he was mentioning, so I don't know if you could look into that, so we can have.
I'm not sure exactly what Mr. Porter is referring to. I know that when the action that Mr. Neal is complaining about, that was actually taken up in open session subsequently, and it was properly noticed. There was substantial public participation, and it was taken in a proper way, so that action is, is valid.
We simply left off the negotiator.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Well, the, the parties, actually.
Yeah. Prime Minister Matthews?
Yes, I won't belabor that particular emphasis right now, except to say that I agree with Mr. Porter on what he had to say there. I have also mentioned similar concerns about the noticing of the consent calendar. I thought that there was things on the consent calendar that after they, I really found out in the meeting what was going on, that I felt didn't actually belong on this consent calendar. Okay, now.
But Mr. Matthews, let me ask a question. If it's on the consent calendar and someone has questions, we all have the right to pull it off, is that correct?
That's right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I guess I don't understand.
But, right now, just sitting back there, I was looking at this particular item, and I'm wondering, the way it's listed, do we have a problem? Because it says this to be presented by Mr. Leview, and we have a Mr. Seelander instead, so I don't know.
What are you asking, sir?
He's saying it's properly noticed, since it says Leview on it, not.
The answer, the answer is yes, it's properly noticed.
He's an attorney, yeah.
Scott Lahey, I, I'm also curious, I would really like to get a hard public answer on whether Mr. Porter's statement is accurate, that you have to have a, first of all, before, I, and I'm, correct me if I'm misunderstanding this, but that the, that the council has a Brown Act obligation to bring up the existence of a negotiation in a public forum. The, and, and a public meeting first, I'm wondering if that's true or not. So, I'm not a lawyer, and we rely on you guys. I wanted to say that I think this is actually a pretty significant omission on our part as a city, and it surprises me that we have incorrectly noticed property negotiations without properly identifying the, the people who we might be selling or buying from. I think had we followed the Brown Act properly, we would have been able to get the fact that a casino was coming here, which is, you know, granted, this is a big thing, but we could have gotten that fact out, that there was a possible casino development going on last summer, which would have given us much more time as a city to research this and to, basically, for the, for the public to digest this, this big event for us. So, anyway, I'm looking forward to our city in the future being a bit more forthcoming with our property negotiations and notifying in accordance with the Brown Act who we are negotiating with, with the idea that it's going out to the public, and so they can see it too and know about it, and then if they have a problem, they can come and tell you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I, I guess the question, Mike, is, is we need, we need a report back from the city attorney as to what kind of public meeting we need to have before we go into closed session to negotiate property.
No, we, we don't need that, as long as we have, have set it properly in the agenda. Just have to use this.
That's not what Mr. Porter's saying. Mr. Porter's saying we have to have a public meeting before we have a closed session meeting, which seems to negate the purpose of the closed session.
Why have a closed session? Yeah.
It kind of, to me, that kind of negates the purpose of a closed session.
How do you negotiate with somebody when you've already done it in the public?
You've already disclosed it all, yeah. That's correct.
Yeah, and, no, it's disclosed.
Anyway, I, I think, I think we need to report back.
Okay.
I'm kind of wondering if just having that in the agenda and announcing that before the meeting satisfies that requirement, but I don't know.
And that is my understanding, but I'll, I'll report back on that.
Other boards I've sat on, that is the way it is. Yeah. Mr. Winnick?
Tom Wicknick, just a real quick add-on to that, it's the reaction of the council when somebody comes up and questions about the Brown Act. He said 19 times out of 20, it's, it's okay, and there's not a problem. The, the question is, though, is that somebody comes up here and says, "I believe this is a violation of the Brown Act," and nobody says anything. And then you just go along and, like, the comment was never made.
Well, that's not, that's not totally true, because the attorney has said that's not his interpretation.
Well, sometimes it does. Sometimes it does, but sometimes somebody will say something, and everybody's silent, and instead of the mayor turning to the city attorney, address that, address the comment about impropriety, that doesn't happen every time.
I will make sure it does in the future, sir.
Yeah, because that would make it a lot better, we get an answer then.
Thank you.
I have to, you, there's something was said as number one, is the, I, I did read the Brown Act, the actual statute at the last meeting, but to answer your question, Mr. Breeden, is the requirement, the, the only part that's allowed to be in closed session is the price and terms. Prior to the closed, closed session, that's the reason that there's nothing secret about who your negotiators are, who you're negotiating with.
We didn't say there was, sir.
No, I didn't say that. I'm just, I'm just explaining, I'm not making any accusations whatsoever. The full and public meeting, which I read the statute before a closed session, or sale of property, is actually one particular section in the Brown Act, and the purpose is so the people can discuss the property itself that's for sale, so the people can discuss their negotiators, who's negotiating it, and, and enlighten the council members so that they have maybe more information when they go back into closed session. It's really about the people's ability to, to inform their, their representatives, and that's what that section was there for, and that's the reason I brought it up. The reason I made the question that I did is, I don't want to have to go through this formal thing and have to spend money paying the city attorney to make these, is, is we just need to discuss this and move forward with it in, in very reasonable manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, any other council comment? Motion?
I would make a motion to approve the two items that Mike mentioned.
I'll second.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sanders.
Aye.
All approve.
Okay, the next item, as your representative on the groundwater management group, I have was told I would, I told you I would bring.
We skipped item 10.
Oh, I thought we approved it.
We approved item nine.
Both of them, you're right, you're right. I'm sorry. Yeah, this is a really important one. Really, really, sorry. Okay, proposed action to approve a resolution of the Richcrest City Council acting as a Richcrest Redevelopment Agency Successor Agency approving the sale of property when the Richcrest Business Park to Richcrest Regional Hospital. There's a lot of Richcrest. Thank you. Mr. Parsons?
The, the purpose of this action is to, is the sale of 2.05 acres, parcel number, APN number 033071-16, which is at, in this case, we actually have an address, which is 1132 Chelsea Street in the city of Richcrest Regional, to the Richcrest Regional Hospital. The, the, the Richcrest Regional Hospital wishes to purchase the 2.5 acres within the business park for the, for $400,000. And is asking the city council as successor agency to approve that sale. The land is currently planned to be utilized as, for the establishment of a crisis center, and this can, this is an all cash offer, and they wish to close as soon as we can possibly make that happen. The, what we're asking the, the council acting as the successor agency is to prove the, is to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and, and make any minor modifications that are required. The current agreement which you have in your packet is a draft agreement. The, the attorneys for the hospital have not yet returned any comments, any minor comments they might have, and it has been submitted to them for a while, so I do believe it's the case. The property is located in the business park, it's lot number 16. It's, it's located next to the Omni, current Omni Clinic, and, which is also similarly located next to the hotel. It's on your map there, it's highlighted behind you in yellow, and it borders Chelsea Street and, which connects to Ward, which is next to China Lake. Those are the three highlighted streets you see there. Another view of that is this property, you're showing the property here, it is owned, commercial, commercial service commercial, which is properly zoned for a medical clinic, and staff is recommending that the council, that the council acting as the successor agency of the city of Richcrest, the successor agency of the redevelopment agency of the city of Richcrest, there's enough Richcrests in there to keep us going for a while, approve the, the resolution presented, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with modern, with minor modifications based on, I'm sure there'll be legalese associated with the hospitals review, legal review of the agreement as well.
I'd like to clarify a little bit on this. The hospital is buying this property to allow the county to build this center, so it's kind of a cooperating effort, if you want to say, between the city, the hospital, and the county. The hospital's putting up the money for the property, the county is building the facility for, I guess, technically, mental health.
Correct, and I believe there's a grant allocated for that.
It will, it will allow our police officers to be able to take, I guess, wording would be unstable individuals, instead of running them all the way to Bakersfield, to be able to put them in this facility for the county, and save a lot of police officer hours in doing that. It's been a joke ever since I've been in town that half the time, the police officers take them over to, what, what's the name of the Kern?
Mary Kay Shell.
Pardon?
Mary Kay Shell.
Mary Kay Shell. The joke's always been that sometimes those people get back before the police officer can get back into town. So, this will provide a facility here that, number one, will save the four-hour round trip and provide, hopefully, better. trip and provide hopefully better response to the, to the person that needs the help. And I'll disclose, I'm the treasurer of the hospital. It's a non-paid position. I do not have a conflict with this, because I don't make any money from it.
Okay, is there any other council comment?
It's, it's something the community's needed for a long time. I'm very, very, very excited about this. Not only does it save time, but it helps those who need the help, because we don't have it. Because if you need any kind of, of mental health or, or intervention, you've got to find a way to get to Bakersfield, and it, it's just challenging for a lot of individuals. So I'm excited for the project, extremely excited, and my understanding, too, is that there is also drug and alcohol inpatient treatment within this as well. I believe it was detox. I don't think it's a full rehab, but I believe it's like the three-day, but that, again, that's something we don't have. You have to go to Loma Linda or Bakersfield or, you know, and that's something desperately needed here. So I'm excited about the project, and I'm looking forward to seeing it get done as soon as possible.
Mr. Spear, if this does pass, where would this money go?
Well, this money would be, would go to our reserve, our actual reserve, not our cash balance.
And that would give us liberty to do anything special with it, or?
Well, actually, that is, I mean, that would be a council decision, but what we're trying to do is get our reserve to where it should be, particularly for bonding purposes. We're trying to get that eventually up to, in the two to three million dollar range, which it was at one point in time. That was over ten years ago, but at one point in time, it was at high.
In other words, let's, don't touch it.
Yes.
Any other council comment? Public comment?
Can we just clap?
Great. Yep.
This is, based on Mr. Porter's comments, this is probably a slight violation of the Brown Act. Is that true?
It was. But I appreciate what, I really, I appreciate you filling in the gaps, because I asked some questions.
Yeah, fortunately, I've had privy to the other side. I didn't vote on it on the other side.
The violation wasn't denied at the time.
You thought this item was a violation of the Brown Act?
Because we didn't have the public, public meeting before we went into closed session.
Or the negotiator.
Your turn.
Or the negotiator. The negotiator was just.
So do we just need to make a motion to approve since?
Yeah, I would point out that part of my job description that you approved is negotiator for the city.
I, I don't know, public knew that, sir.
Well, it's part of the public record in terms of staff descriptions.
But in reference to, now, and we know that that's who you are, what your capacity you're operating in.
The council did publicly approve.
That's what I'm talking about. Make sure that they know who the negotiator is, even though we may know, they may not know.
Yeah, that was on the previous agenda.
Okay. So is there any action?
By the way, the hospital never buys property without getting an appraisal.
I motioned to approve this. That's what I have.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Mauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sanders.
Aye.
All approve. Okay, now what I was going to tell you, my apologies all. There was one item that, that we, that I did not feel confident enough to vote upon. For one thing, I didn't agree with it, was the, how the committees that would address the GSA issues was constituted, and so it was sent back to staff, staff, Alan, what is Alan's last name?
Christiansen.
Christiansen, thank you. Alan and county council, and Indian Wells Valley Water District Director Peter Brown and Supervisor Gleason are going to come back with a better description of who the committee is going to be, and we all, we all recommended, named people to be involved in the committee who would work on the, the plan to develop a groundwater management sustainability option. What I'm asking you here tonight is that I voted on, yes, on this item because we had already agreed to it, but I just wanted you all to be aware that voting on that goes then to the state. The state, we have thirty days in which to have a public hearing, and then we have thirty day, I believe it's thirty days to respond, so that this is just an item that will begin the process for a public hearing. We've already approved the establishment and our participation in the GSA. So I would like validation, I guess is what I'm asking, of my approval, because it really didn't approve anything other than to say we were going forward, but I would like that from all of you, because what I voted upon, in my mind, was simply a process. Any comment?
So you're saying it's not actually final yet? Is that what you're saying? It's going to come back?
It is final. It is final. My vote was final, because we had already approved it.
But I mean, the establishment of the GSA is not.
Well, no, because it has to go to the state.
Right.
The state will come back and say, I think there is a ninety-one agencies who have applied for that position as a GSA, and there was, I can't remember the number, a minimal number that have been turned down because they weren't a sole area, and so they will, the state will have the final approval on it after our public hearing.
Yeah. I mean, my, my personal opinion is you accurately read the intentions of the council when we talked about it before, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Porter.
I didn't quite understand everything. I tried to read that letter that was attached in, in the agenda, and I didn't quite understand it. What I was concerned about is they were creating an awful lot of bureaucracy in their new organization before they actually put their plans and what we're, how we're going to move forward, and I see them creating another taxing agency, which it discusses as well. I'm very much concerned to, the real problem is, how are we going to resolve the issue? And that really needs to be the, the point high up on the agenda. We know we're going to, either going to have to reduce the, the usage of water in, in the valley tremendously, or we're going to have to import water in some form or fashion.
Or treatment thereof.
Treatment wouldn't even solve it in this particular situation right now.
Well, there's two million acre feet in storage, the, from the Bureau of Rec, there's two million acre feet of, of storage at depth. Assuming that it's very brackish, it will require treatment. Is it feasible? No one has those answers yet, and there are, there are brackish water areas with that in this area that are not at, at huge depths, where we can treat that.
Oh, yes, in fact, just, just across the county line in San Bernardino County, a lot of that area is brackish up there and could be treated. In fact, there's been geological studies that were never mentioned in, that I saw that, that brackish water, because we're depleting the other basin, it's flowing into the basin and causing contamination problems. That was written many, many years ago. Whether it was ever verified, I don't know, but it was a, it was a supposition put forth, and, but we really need to recreate, I'm just so much afraid of, we're creating a bureaucracy that, number one, we won't have the resolution, and number two is whether the state's going to really give, give assistance to it, because all they really want is a report, how are you going to do this? But we don't know if we're going to get any assistance to, to move on further down the road from that, and I, I very much worry about private property owners saying, "We're going to put well, meters on your wells, we're going to tell you how much water you can use."
Right, right now, sir, the de minimis user, which uses more than a two acre feet, and right now, the average user is using point eight-six acre feet of water. The de minimis user will have no, no, right, as the law stands right now, may, is totally excluded from this. The only exception may be, as a de minimis user, if you say, "I've got five acres and it's totally filled with turf," clearly you are using more than two acre feet to water five acres of turf. Your, your answer to that is, "Put a meter on your well, show us that you're using less than two acre feet a year." Right now, that's how it stands. I don't know how the law is going to be changed in the future, can't address that.
Well, I know, but that's what I'm very much concerned about, is the amount of control.
Well, but if we don't, if we don't address it, the state has already told us, "We will address it for you," and if anybody thinks that they're going to care whether what really happens to all of us and at what rate they charge us to do that, I think we're sorely deluding ourselves.
Well, to tell you the honest truth, if you told, if you didn't do it, the state would probably just ignore it for another twenty years like they have already, but I don't disagree with your sentiment. The state just did it because it felt good at the time. I'm just worried about, when we create this bureaucracy, it has to be a very inefficient bureaucracy, and I don't see that so far. That's all I'm, my, my real concern is about. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, is there any other comment, motion?
Do you need a motion?
I think I need approval. I feel I needed approval. I wanted to explain it. If you don't think it needs approval, that's, that's your choice.
I don't think it need, legally need approval, but if, if the mayor wants to bring a motion to get the, to get it in writing, I mean, get it on the record that, that the council agrees.
We're authorizing you to proceed. That's basically what we're doing.
Yeah, and you complied completely with what we asked.
Which you told me.
Yeah, I was able to listen, because I was traveling, but yeah, it was great.
Should we, should we?
I have a, you make the motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we give the mayor direction that she's proceeding in the right direction, and we approve her action.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Mauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Acton.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sanders.
Aye.
All approve. Okay. This next item is an item that I asked to be on there after our, our, and I don't know if we can necessarily approve anything, but I'd like to send it back to staff, direction to staff, that if nonprofits come and want to use the facility, and if they're, I don't know which one, a legal nonprofit, a registered nonprofit, to use our facilities, give them a lesser rate than we charge somebody who is coming to use it for other purposes. I would like us to give directions to staff to make that happen, if you so agree.
Now, Ty, we do presently have a lower rate, but how much lower is that?
I don't believe there's a set percentage or anything like that, and it depends on the facility, but for example, full hall without kitchen for a nonprofit is six-thirty.
And how much is it normally?
And a full hall, I believe it's seven-fifty.
So that's not much of a reduction. Do we want to set a percenti, how often do we get a nonprofit wanting to use the hall? Quite often?
That, I'm not sure, but I, I believe fairly often.
Yeah, I think many of them are. The only ones that aren't are people who are using it for weddings or, or their own parties or things like, you think the Lions Club, when they do, the, the Elks, the, we have numerous, the NRA, we, all of them are using it, and if we could, could at least come up with something that allows us to not feel like we have to pay it ourselves because we believe in the organization, I would like to find a way to accomplish that for our nonprofits. Is there any, a percentage? Ten percent?
So a ten percent reduction or twenty-five percent off our normal fees, what you're saying, like, across the board for nonprofits?
I, no, I don't know whether twenty-five percent.
I'm just throwing numbers out. I'm just saying that, that's the general.
Something, just, okay. I'm picking ten, because it's a nice round number. It could be fairer at fifty. It could be fairer at two. I, I don't know, but I want to give staff some direction, because they didn't feel like they had it last time, and I'd like to be able to give it to them. So we're going to have to do this. Last two times, we've, we've eaten it ourselves. As council members and, and as planning commissioners, I would like to have some direction for staff.
Um, Ty, do you know, how, how is the discounted rate calculated?
I'm not sure. Mr. Patton was one that provided these numbers for the budget hearing.
Okay.
Would that affect his anticipated revenues from this year's budget?
Absolutely would. Oh, my question.
And my other question was, are these the numbers Patton came up with, or are these ones that were handed down because they were under, prior to him taking over the department? And, and the reason I ask is because data-driven, I know that we've implemented since then, and so Mr. Patton actually can be very accurate versus our guessing system from before.
Well, just looking at twenty-sixteen fees versus twenty-seven, twenty-seventeen fees, they have increased, so these aren't just handed down.
And no, I, I know the fees are, but the reduction is kind of a, it's just handed, I mean, it's.
Oh, yeah.
That's, okay, so maybe kind of knowing how he arrived at the reduction or something.
All right, then, let's, let, let me change it. Let's ask Mr. Patton to come back and give us some more full information of what we do, how, how a ten percent reduction or a five percent reduction or whatever will affect his budget. Is that okay with all of you?
That's probably a good idea.
Okay.
I'd have a hard time voting for something that we don't know.
Well, I don't want to vote on a specific number tonight, because I don't think we know enough, but I do want to get the process going, and the only way I could is kept asking for it to be on the agenda, so that's where, if that's okay, can we direct?
Yes.
Mr. Patton to do that?
Call the board.
Tom Winknick is one that's involved with a number of nonprofits that use the facility. My only addition I would add to your consideration is on how the nonprofit is actually using the facility, if they're using it to raise funds and they make a lot of money by using the facility versus a nonprofit that would come in and charge nothing for the people to come to the thing.
Like the international thing.
Exactly.
Like we did, and like the Blue Zone did.
Something like that, where they're, they're not making any money off of this, and they're just providing a service to the community versus the nonprofits that come in and make a lot of money.
I think that's a good point.
They make a lot of money, and it's just part of the cost of having the event at the facility. So instead of just saying all nonprofits, it should be the purpose of that.
That's a real good point, because, for example, the, the hospital's a not-for-profit corporation, and they have their Christmas party at Curmady every year. I'm sure they pay for it, because we, we budget money for it, so.
Mr. Porter.
Well, first off, I want to thank you, Madam Mayor, for bringing this forward. It's, it's an issue that we've needed to discuss for some time, and we, you know, we have nonprofit, you have public benefit. If you're going to look at the policy, I would appreciate if you had something in there working, be brought to council, if you figure it's a strong community event that you can even look at. This is something that's, has a great enough benefit for the city that, that it should be, like you talked about the other one the other day. We should go ahead and approve it at the minimal cost or whatever, something that actual council can address, but I don't want to make it a daily task for the council either, so I'm concerned about that, and I was concerned about what you said. It's like, we have small groups, like myself, I, I help teach our constitution classes on occasion, but the people that do the work, they get paid, there, there's no money in it for them. You know, you understand what I'm saying? They're not making any money whatsoever, and we need to take those things, things into consideration, too, when, when we look at this, or hopefully. I, I'm just saying, I love your idea, and it's great that you, you brought it up and you're expanding on this, but if we're going to do it, let's go ahead and answer it. Let's look at all different aspects that people may bring to your attention.
Okay.
Because I think you're right, it's something that needs to be addressed, and I don't want to see that the council have to waste a bunch of time, everybody coming up here and saying, "I want this." You know, "I want mine," and, you know, you guys have more to do than that as well. Thank you.
I think that's the idea, to send it back to Mr. Patton for his advice and consideration and come back to us and, and develop a policy. Am I incorrect?
Yeah, and then we develop a policy that staff can implement.
That's right. I don't want to hear it every time.
Doesn't have to come before council every time.
Yep, I agree.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So hopefully this will be on the next, well, one of the next couple meetings' agendas.
Yeah, next meeting would be difficult, where these are due on Monday, the, the items for the following.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Sanders.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I asked to put this on the agenda, because we have a couple of issues where we have, we, we've all talked about it, and we all kind of agree on, you know, this is some low-hanging fruit to, to go after, some. on, you know, this is some low-hanging fruit to, to go after, some, some real revenue for the city of Ridgecrest. And I would like to form an ad hoc committee, on the purpose of, kind of like a task force to really go after some of those things. More of like a working group to, to, to sit down with some key staff members, and, and to, to really spearhead, you know, going after those funds. So the two, two things that I was looking at, that we had talked about as a, as a council, was the PILF funding, and also the, our, our proportional share of the tax, of the property tax that comes from the county, so.
May I say, say something?
Yes, please.
Last January, Councilman McCarthy's office was asked, what was the process of getting PILF funding for here? And it came back was that there was no PILF funding for counties, I'm sorry, for cities. There was only counties in the state. And the only PILF funding that came to this area was $2 million that went to Kern County. And that was based on their VLM land, and the, the land that's in the county, and the Forest Service land, from the Department of Interior's money. The only other possibility was if you had an inactive base in your, in your community, in your county, where you, it was taking up space but providing no income, there was PILF funding for that. So I think we'd be really, it would take a lot of work to try to go find out that, to do the same thing again and find out.
Well, I-
That there is no PILF funding for cities.
I, I respect the, that opinion. I, I, I've, I've looked for that letter. I don't have it, so if you could forward that to me, I'd appreciate that. But I've done a lot of reading, research on the PILF funding, and, and most of it's come from what Mr. Spear has already done. And nothing that I've read in the government code prohibits cities from getting PILF funding, nothing.
Mr. Spear, did you just tell me the other day that was not-
Well, on the, on the Department of Interior's website, as far as for applications for PILF funding, they, they indicate that only states and counties can receive that funding. So, I mean, I haven't looked at the government code, no.
That's, that's correct.
I just, I just simply looked at the, their, their information on, on the website for the Department of Interior, as to who is eligible to apply. And they, they indicated it was only states and county.
No, and, and that is correct. And for active military bases, there's, there's a separate line of funding. It's not called PILF, it's called something else. But it come, it doesn't come through the Department of Interior, it comes through the Department of Energy. And it's, it's, it's an equivalent to PILF. However, I, I just, I haven't done all the research required to really search that out. So, but I, you know, I don't even need to be the one on the committee, I just, I just want to make sure the council's really looking into this.
I would like us also to look at why, how we can address the five cents we get back on the sales tax.
Exactly.
I mean, property tax, when others, Calphonia City gets 14 cents, and others get 16 cents, and we get 5 cents. I know it has to do with the dissolution of the RDA, but I'd like to, us to look at that.
Yeah.
Staff has in fact been investigating that, and we've, there, there are certain leads that we're following up on right now. It's premature really to discuss them at this time, but-
Okay.
We've, we've found some rather encouraging information on that.
Good, good job.
Dennis, maybe let me get your take on this too. I mean, is, is establishing an ad hoc committee at this point going to help you, or slow you down on some of the work you guys are doing on the staff level?
Well, on the staff level, I, I suspect it actually might help.
Yeah.
We could, we could share, you know, as a working group. But if we're talking about committees, where we're just getting people throwing out ideas, where we already have a train of thought, and we've already got information we're following up, then it could slow us down. But if we're talking about just, you know, a, either appointed or council members, working with staff where we're at now, just so we can show you what we have, what we're working on, I think that could be beneficial. But if it's going to be a committee where everybody wants to reinvent the wheel, after we've already done hours of kind of, you know, work at this point, that's, that, that could be a problem.
Okay. That's good input, thank you. No, my, my intention was not to, to redo the work you guys are doing. It'd simply be to, to focus it and give a, a method to report back to the whole council, so.
Well, Jim, since you've already done some studying on this Department of Energy thing, maybe you should follow up on it.
I'd be happy to, yeah.
Because if, if there's, you know, maybe we asked the wrong question last January.
Yeah, and, and I, I just imagine, like, just reading through that, the, the actual government code is, is insane. I mean, there's, and it's typical, typical federal government practice, you know, there's earmarks for all different, very specific kind of things. And it kind of makes me think that's, that's how it's done, is you almost have to have specific legislation written in for your specific, you know, application. And so, I mean, I don't, I don't understand that. I don't think it's a good method, but that's the system, so. And maybe that's the route we end up taking eventually, is lobbying for actual legislation to be written, so.
Very good. So what, is it, you're going to look on the energy part?
Uh, yeah, I'd like the whole ad hoc committee to be looking into that, yeah.
So here's my, my question, is, like, I work with Gary a lot doing the economic development, but I don't have a, a committee or anything like that, but then I report back to council to let y'all know what I've done. Same thing, or do you actually want to also have a committee so you can have some occasional meetings with folks to discuss other alternatives?
Um, my, you know, it, it's really up to whoever's put in charge of this committee. I mean, I'm not going to assume that. But my envision, my vision for this was really administrative meetings, where, you know, it's just the committee, working with staff, and then reporting back to the entire council, where the, the public would then give input on that, that report.
Well, if you, if you pursue that, I don't think we need a committee for that.
Right, yeah, it's just you as a council member doing it and report back.
Okay, I mean, that, that's fine too. I didn't, I mean, if, if somebody else wanted to join in on that, that'd be a, a committee, but if not, that's, that's the way we do it.
I'd be happy to help you any way I can, but if you, you know, whatever you need, it's, you, you're, you're the leader. So, you decide.
I work best in a group, so I, I actually would like a committee to-
Okay, then I'd be happy to help.
Okay, wonderful.
All right, thank you. All right, so we are now at-
Well, do we need a, a motion to make a committee then?
Oh, do we?
To form a committee, or is that-
I don't think-
With the help from?
You and I are just working on a project.
This was not, this was not a specific, this was not a, not a agenda item, have a specific, a, a committee formed, it was just discussing ad hoc committees in general.
Oh, it is.
And as Mr. Spear pointed out, if we do create a, a committee, it has to be open to the public as well.
Ad hoc committees do not. That's what I've been told by Mr. Lemieux, but-
Okay, I might be wrong, I'll, I'll check. Okay.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's why when we discussed the finance committee, we didn't make an ad hoc committee. We-
Made a regular committee.
An ad hoc committee is basically, for a specific project, then it goes away. It's not a standing committee, so.
Stan, I, do you have a comment, sir?
Yes, there, I, I think we all agree that there is PILF funding to the county through the Department of the Interior for BLM.
And Forest Service, yeah.
The county's getting the money. We don't really know where the land is necessarily, although I suspect that most of the land, or a lot of the land, because the land on the other side of the hill, a lot of that's farmland, and not open BLM land like we have over here. It might be interesting to follow up on the county to find out where that BLM land is. And if it's all on this side of the hill, then it would be interesting to find out where the county is spending that money, and if maybe some of that money shouldn't be earmarked for us, I guess, is what I was trying to say. If that money is being spread uniformly around Kern County, I would expect then the land that's, that is the reason for it being given to Kern County would also be spread through, throughout the county. So I think we should find out whether or not we're getting our share of that PILF fund that go to the county. And the information I have is that it's closer to 2.5 million rather than 2 million.
Looked in their last budget, it was 2, but it may be, this new budget may have more. I don't know.
Yeah, I, well, I, I spoke with Donna just a couple of weeks ago, so that was what she told me.
Okay.
The other thing is, one of the things we brought up on multiple occasions, is the fact that we're still, we're still paying Kern County $400,000 a year for fire protection, when we see it on our, our yearly tax bills every year. And it would be interesting to find out if all communities pay that additional $400,000, or at least something prorated some way. Because if we're the only town in Kern County that pays that $400,000, I think we need to have, sit down and have a serious talk. Now, if we find out we should be paying $500,000, we won't, you know, sit down. We got to figure out, how did that number come about? And is the reason for what, how it came about still relevant? And what do other communities pay for the same types of services? But, but there is, I think, some work that needs to be done in that area too. Because if we're the only ones that are paying that, I'm not saying we are, we, we need, we need that money more than the county does. Thank you.
Supervisor Gleason asked me the other day why we canceled our fire service. And I said we were told to do so, so we could renegotiate it. And I know Dennis is working with them. Are you at any point where you can report?
They, they promised the, the draft agreement by the end of the month. Haven't seen it yet, but that's what I was, what was explained to me. They also explained that unlike the other cities, that we probably will be pleased, because our fire fund is in, as far as the, the amount of money in, the fire fund for us is, is, we're much better off than the other incorporated cities. He said everyone else is going to be seeing a, a raise in their contribution, or their estimated contribution. But he said we wouldn't be. But I haven't seen the agreement, so I can't give any numbers at this time.
So it's already being pursued, is what you're telling me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, thank you.
Right.
Did you want to say something else?
Well, just the fact that, that, that you already mentioned, and that is, is we had to send a notice of nonrenewable, null, so we'd be in a position to renegotiate the agreement.
Right.
Because without that, it would automatically renew for another five years. And the only negotiation was covered in just one single provision, which was very, gave us very little, little ability to actually, quote, negotiate for our fee.
Thank you.
I have one other thing. The Economic Development Committee that, that met earlier in the year that we've talked about, I made the call, and I know that, as far as I know, BLM did answer and tell them where the area was. So that answer should be out there. I know I talked to Chip and, and, ah, Real Estate, I cannot think of her name, that's on the committee. Donna? It was somebody who was-
Oh, Donna Harker worked with that.
Yes, yes. So she should have the answer for that as well.
Okay. All right, so, Mr. Sanders, is there anything else we want to say on this?
Uh, no, I don't think so. We'll just kind of get together and, with staff, and talk about it.
All right, committee reports, city org.
Haven't met yet, we meet next week.
Infrastructure.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Parks and Rec?
Never meet, no.
Pretty much. Unless we have a specific reason, we don't meet.
That brings up a point. Here, a while back, there was just-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, how are you going to answer for us, when you're not on our committee?
Because you always say we haven't met.
Then let us say we haven't met.
Thank you.
Okay, haven't met.
A while back, some committee was talking about reducing the grass at City Hall in some areas possibly.
Yes, and recycling.
The ad hoc water conservation committee, yeah.
Because I really think, there's one section out here that way, that we could just take that grass out, stop watering it, and put gravel or something in there at a fairly minimal cost. And-
And?
When I drive in from the east heading west, and drive around, the parks come through that door that takes the code on the east end, I have to drive around that grass. There's little tri, two little triangles of grass out there that seem to me to be a waste. And they kind of stick out, so you have to drive around them, where if we took them off, I don't know.
But now, there could be some, I don't know, special bird that uses it for nesting, and we might be stuck with it forever.
No, it'll be a, it'll be a snail or something.
Something, I'm just saying. But, yeah, that's, if you would like us to, to have a committee meeting for two triangles of grass, versus me just calling up Jason and saying, "Hey, I'm happy to do so."
Just call up Jason.
Okay.
Actually, you have to-
That's why we have a bet.
You have to have Dennis call up Jason.
What are we going to ask him?
What are the plans for the triangles of grass that he's complaining about, and then if there's, he can bring it to council, and we can discuss.
Okay.
I will discuss that with him, because in fact, as I recall, what, what broke down is there was a particular landscape contractor that was going to give him some numbers, but he had some health problems.
Peter is just getting back to normal?
And, and, right.
Yeah.
And so I'll, I'll remind Jason of that, though.
Okay.
At, at some point, though, the, we will finalize kind of a, a report, more or less, for the ad hoc water conservation committee, and, and bring that back. That's just the last piece that we're missing.
It just seems like it's been a long time since we heard it.
It has. Peter's been sick for probably six or eight months, six months anyhow. Okay, ad hoc youth advisory?
Uh, they just started back at school, have not met.
Okay. The Activate Community, go ahead.
Action.
The Action Committee.
We did meet. We met with three entities, the school, the school police, the teen court, and the neighborhood watch. Talked about the beginning of the school year, the typical things that go on in the school, at the beginning of the school year, and that'd be the fights that break out. Kids, kids are happy to be back at school evidently. Talked about the, the issues that they will have to be dealing with this year in reference to the transgender issues that exist, in reference possibly to the bathrooms, the lockers, training that will need to take place, in reference to the teachers, counselors, staff. We also talked about the, how important it is that we do have those officers, both at the high school level and the middle school level. We didn't have them, what kind of shape the schools would be in. If the school board would have to fund it 100%, because, as an example, if, if Measure V is not successful, then that would diminish our visibility over at the schools. So, we need that to go forward. The other thing was the teen court. And by the way, we have two people that are working, if we didn't know, two people that are working at the school, Officer Franco and Officer Hamilton. And then teen court, we talked about the, how many people are in the program, 25 people in the program. We have 40 people that completed the program, in reference from January to January. We take in about 65 to 85 people in the course of a year, and it ranged from misdemeanors to, what's the other term they?
Tony?
Traffic citations.
Traffic citations, thank you, sir. Without that program, then the kids would be, just get, get a, issued of a probation letter, and be back out doing the same thing. This allows them not to affect their possibility for employment, for maybe armed services. So this is a really good program, that the kids have the ability to govern themselves in reference to go through the system of finding out what it really takes to become productive citizens, as well as the parents as well. And then the last thing we talked about was the Neighborhood Watch with Mr. Andy. Talked about the skate park, that the graffiti is really high. We got five new volunteers, got 25, we got 99,000 hours that go forward, in reference to the Neighborhood Watch in the community, donations, support to the volunteers' effort by volunteer their time to making sure that our community is safe. And that was pretty much the extent of our meeting.
Thank you. RACVV?
Haven't met since the last meeting.
We met, but we just didn't, we didn't, we didn't report, because we had a very, very long meeting.
I was going to say, you did.
Yes, I apologize.
City council meeting.
And, and I did not bring that sheet with me, because it's in my other notebook.
I don't have it either.
All right. We will get it next time. If you will just bring it and put it, so we can report on it. Other committees, boards, or commissions? Other committees, boards, or commissions?
I've been dying all night to report this. Jim, did you go to Kern Cog?
I did.
This month, okay. I'm gonna report on something from, from Kern Cog last meeting, or last month. It was, the way Kern Cog works is they have a, a presentation at 6:00, then the regular meeting starts at 6:30. The presentation at 6:00 was by the San Joaquin Valley-
Air Pollution-
Air Pollution Control District, thank you. I went blank, I couldn't read my own notes. They're under federal mandates, they, and since, since the federal mandate started, and I'm gonna get these figures backwards, probably, they have reduced pollution by 80%, which sounds fantastic. They are now under mandates to reduce it another 90, or either it's 90% or 80%. I, I know the two figures were 90 and 80, I'm not sure which ones to go. In order for them, and they've, they submitted a plan to the federal government, and they have never responded back. And, and the reason this is important is because it is impossible for them to meet the new mandates. They said they'd have to eliminate oil in the whole San Joaquin Valley, eliminate agriculture in the whole San Joaquin Valley, or shut 99 down completely. In order to, in order, and then not any one of those would actually reach the mandate. And if they don't really reach the mandate, the federal government could stop federal highway tax funding to the San Joaquin Valley, which also applies to us, because it would affect all of Kern County, even though we're in a separate district.
Wow.
So, the, the consequences are extreme. They've had no success in dealing with the federal government on this. The EPA has ignored their plan they submitted, and, so they just wanted everybody in Kern Cog to be aware of what was going on. The, the requirements are ridiculous and impossible to meet. And I don't know if this is going on in other areas or not, the, the only report we got was in San Joaquin Valley, so, it's just... Did Ron leave? He would love this one, because he loves federal mandates, so. Anyway, it's, it's scary, what's, what's happening, so.
Okay. Eddie, did you have any other? Oh, I'm sorry, Jim, do you want to go to this Kern Cog meeting?
Yeah, Mike, you sent me to the, I think, one of the most benign Kern Cog, and boring Kern Cog meetings there was.
And I wait a couple of months, three, four months ago, it was a 20-minute, both meetings lasted a total of 20 minutes.
We almost beat you.
You almost beat-
I was back in my car at 7:00, and so, it was about 30 minutes.
The last one I went to was 20 and a half hours.
But we did have a good presentation, and I think it was good that I went no matter what, just because it's good for the Kern Cog and the rest of the cities to see our, you know, we have, we have a presence there.
Did you go to the dinner?
Uh, no, I did not, no. So I, I showed up at 6:00. They had a presentation by Cal Vans, which was really good.
Was it Ron Hughes?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it was, I've known it a long time.
No, that was a really good presentation, and, and basically, it kind of goes along with the, you know, the, the mandate for, for public transportation. And it, it seemed like it was an applica, I don't know a whole lot about it, and I was trying to understand, but I, I need to research a little more, I guess. Do you, do you know much about it, Dennis?
No, he, he established it, he set it up, got the funding, created the legislation to make it possible, really. And what it is, is, I mean, it's a, it's van pulls, it can be used in different settings, it can be used for collecting employees and to the base. He's asked, he's actually asked me if he could come over here to the city to make presentations.
I mean, when I was, when I was looking at his presentation, the, the two things I thought of was for the base, but also for the community college, yeah.
Yeah, yes, no, exactly, he and I discussed that, because he thought that would be a good idea. Because it, it could, you know, provide transportation, so that they're not waiting at bus stops. Of course, that hurts a fare box, but-
That's the only one that's working, isn't it? The one that goes up to colleagues, so we're gonna kill that one?
Well, I was, I was curious as to whether or not that would count towards the fare box, or if there's anything that, I, I don't know how that-
Well, you know, you know, it's worth the discussion, because, based on what was, you know, mentioned or discussed earlier, if there is a way to take care of students' needs, because there are a high percentage of our riders, really. If there's a way to take care of their needs through Cal Vans, and they're, and, and I can have a discussion with Bob Snotty, or even Aaron at the Kern Cog. Not for, not for us to just on our own want to go back, want to undo what they've done, but if there's, if there's a, a way that we're taking care of part of our riderships through Cal Vans, and we can revert to a demand, a dollar ride, even, even though that is, that we could significantly reduce our overall costs. Now, whether we can get approval from Kern Cog, it's at least worthy of, of having initial discussions on that.
Right.
But, no, no, Ron has got a very workable program, it's, he uses it, I, I think he has, Cal Vans going out to the, the distribution centers out of Bakersfield, collecting the people, out to major ranches, I mean, to major employers, you know, for, no, it's, it's a worthwhile program. If it would be council's direction, I'm, I know Ron can come over here and make a presentation sometime.
I think that'd be a worthwhile conversation.
What about if we include the college in that presentation?
Invite them to come down.
That would seem to be even more appropriate, too.
Realizing it may reduce our fare box.
But maybe we could get rid of one bus.
Yeah.
The one we just approved.
That's right.
No, the next one that's obsolete, just not replace it.
Anything else, sir?
That's all, yeah, the, the rest of it was just consent calendar items that were-
All right, Lori?
No. I'm just reporting from the East Kern Air Pollution Control District. Because we are at the good end of the valley, we don't have those same issues that San Joaquin has. And in order to do that, a new, a new station will be set up here in Richcrest, and it will include a shelter to house PM-10 and PM-2.5, air, air monitoring, data logging, equipment, meteorological, say that in English, equipment, a computer, and a data transmitting equipment. And that is scheduled to, it was scheduled to go in in May of 2016, and is now going to be February of 2017. And that was what we had at East Kern Air Pollution Control District. Any other meetings? City Managers Report.
Oh, just two things, really. One is, we received four proposals from firms that are interested in the on-call planner consulting opportunity, and we're, we have all but one seat filled as far as the selection committee. We need someone from the, from the council. We, we currently have someone from the Planning Commission, we have two staffers, and now we need a, I understand there's two council members that may be interested, but I need a name, and then we can, I can distribute the proposals.
You talked to me about a week and a half ago about serving.
I would love to serve on that committee.
I'd like to, yes.
And, but you are more available than I am, so I think it should be you.
Okay, thank you, Lori.
Okay, then I have my final name. Thanks.
That's it? Okay, future-
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, one other thing. And that is, the Measure V now has a, you can click on that on the website now. And we'll be adding more information as soon as that information has been, it's been prepared by our consultant, but it has to be reviewed legally to make sure that we're not being proactive and having an advocacy tone to it. So it's being reviewed by our city attorney. As soon as he blesses the, the information, then that'll be posted as well.
Thank you. Okay, future agenda items? Anybody?
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna be attending the League of California Cities meeting on October 5th, yeah. And we will have a, a vote at that meeting. I've been so busy with other things, I haven't even looked over the agenda yet, but I'll, I'll most likely post an item discussing that agenda item on, for the league, so that I know how the council feels about, you know, the direction where you want me to vote, so.
And we have a city council meeting that night.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to call in.
All right.
The actual vote won't be till Friday, I believe. I, I may actually not even drive up till Thursday, early Thursday morning. I need to work out my schedule, but, yeah.
Okay, any other future agenda items?
I, I know, I have a couple that I would like to talk about. I have seen Stan's report, and it's been commented on the newspapers, that the Navy does not pay their fair share of the SOAR facility. I would like us to look at that, whether we do it through a rate study. I, if, if there is validity to what he says, then we need to look at it, we need to understand where we go forward. I think it's important that we come up with either a rate study, or an answer to that, or whatever needs to be done. It's, because as the GSA is beginning to look at options, we have 2,000 acre feet of water that is sitting in our percolation ponds, just bubbling away, or percolating and bubbling away, going to the, into the ground or being evaporated. What a horrible waste of water. And I want to see, if that is the case, what we can do and, and use that. Sir, if you wanted to say something?
Well, if, if, there, there's two different things. One is, if you want, if you want an understanding of what the Navy pays, we can let you know exactly what, the amount that they pay. And, and we can do that on the agenda item. But the, the idea of the, the current agreement we have with them, and, and we would have to negotiate a, a different agreement with them if we were to place a new wastewater plant there, is they have an entitlement of 750 acres. And until we had negotiated a new agreement, that water's theirs, up to that amount a year, so. But, no, we'll, we'll, I'll work with Ty, and we'll get to the numbers, because I know exactly what Dr. Rittora is referring to. And just the long and the short of it, is they pay a lot more than they used to, but they do not pay the calculated amount that we had requested them to pay. And they explained that by referring me back to their agreement, and, because first of all, it said that we couldn't approach them to renegotiate the rate they pay till we did a rate study across the board. We did the study, and we calculated what they should pay, and we billed them for it. And they're six months actually behind from everyone else paying, because they said, "Uh, you need to re-rate your agreement." It doesn't say we'll pay what you come up with in the rate study. It says that if you do a rate study across the board and raise your rates, then you can come to us and renegotiate, the rate we'll pay. And so, they're paying far more than they used to, but they are not paying the rate that we calculated that they should pay.
We need to look at that and address that. I think it's important to fairness for everybody.
Okay, I'll, I'll bring that back.
All right.
So Dennis, oh, sorry, could I ask him one question?
Please.
So are we, are we currently negotiating with them on that, then, or?
No, they've, we, we worked out, and that's what we'll explain, too, we've worked out what they will pay and what they will, what their increases will be over this period of time. But it's not like the rest of the community. They're, they made it clear that they negotiate outside of that, because they're, they're holding to the existing agreement.
That's what the agreement says, yeah.
Yeah, what the agreement says.
The last thing I would like, I'd like, whether it be Mr. Parchins or whoever does it, whether it's legal, explain where we're going with, after the sale of the land, what the process is. I've heard a lot of people say, "Well, now it has to go to, to the Bureau of Indian Affairs, it has to go to the compact state." The casino, I'm sorry, thank you. The compact with the state, and it has to go through NEPA. Can you give us a timeline and a frame-
The future steps, okay, we can, we can try.
Of where we're going with that? Okay, those are the items I have. Okay, Mayor Counseling Comments?
I've got two things. Chief, we, we put a sign on my fence on the corner of Bridgecrest and Downs for Measure V. Are we gonna have yard signs available?
That's up to the advocacy.
They are making sure.
Are they making so, okay, because I think it'd be nice to get those out on, I'd like to have one on my property, so. Second item I want to bring up, I attended the chamber luncheon last week, and I was appalled at what went on there. I want to apologize to Dennis that I did not step in sooner than I did. He was attacked by a, an elected representative of ours, which I thought she was way out of line. And so I challenged her, saying she was comparing apples to oranges, and then the chamber president stepped in and says, "Well, we're out of time, we're in, we're ending," because she wanted to do it sooner, Dennis, except you were trying to answer her charge, and so she couldn't get in, in the meeting. So, I publicly want to apologize to you, I know the chambers, if they haven't already, they're sending you a letter of apology. You were, you were a guest of the chamber there, and they were embarrassed by what happened. And, so, that was totally inappropriate, what went on. And hopefully it'll never happen again, so.
Thank you.
With that, gee, we can get out of here by 9:30, the rest of you don't talk too much.
Okay, you've given your direction. Sir, what do you have to say? You've got an hour and a half here.
I, I just have, wanted to thank our military that was here tonight, and they're willing to come out and share, and continue to partner with this great city of Richcrest. I also wanted to thank our, our chief for working with the people over at the Rose Garden. And we haven't heard any of the final standings of that as of yet. But from my understanding, I think it all worked out, that the attorney came over and did pro bono work, and got it all worked out with the group of people that came up and spoke. So, thank you for taking them in the back and, and working with them, and getting them that contact as good citizens as well. So with that, that's all I had.
Lori?
I have a lot, sorry, Mike. I was excited with the Navy coming here, obviously. You had to call me back up, so I could pay attention to the meeting. There's a lot going on, but I had talked about this before, I didn't get to go last year, and we are working like crazy. Yay, I will be going to Washington DC next week for the Smart Cities Conference. And everybody wants to know what a smart city is. And while we are a smart city PhD-wise, a smart city is, and I'll read you the announcement, it's easier, "Highly Interactive Conference and Expo that showcases cutting-edge technologies, real-world solutions, and proven strategies by government leaders." Here's the part that we need to pay attention to. To build more livable, workable, sustainable cities using integrated technologies that are already helping cities to be connected, and developing policy and government working around that. So with that being said, we're surrounded by them, if you've heard of Smart Riverside, I don't know if you have or not, and it's not just for their transit or their bus system, okay? Has to do with broadband and all of the connections that we already make. And my exposure to that was two years ago on the Government Roundtable for Broadband. So I've been following it and trying to find a way to help us integrate into that, because we're already very progressive with our base. This is just another way to bring our city into it, but then expand on that. And be able to use it for bringing industry here, so more jobs. Being able to, of course, do the retail, but there's a whole other side and component to this, so I'm excited to go, I'm excited to bring the information back. And there's some other events coming up later in the year that are in California that I think would behoove us to go to, if anybody can take the time to go to them. And I can give you that information. One of them is the Meeting of the Minds. There's a webinar on the 28th, but more importantly, there is one in Richmond, California, in October, the 25th or the 27th. And it's an annual summit of the Smart Cities. It's over 400 policyholders, and let me kind of give you the basic, very basic. Well, the summit, by the way, is in San Francisco in October. And that's the one that has the Remote Sensor Platforms and the Role in Data Collection for Infrastructure Development, the Use of Collected Data for Government Initiatives and Sustainable Design Implementation. But, the one I'm talking about is Urban Solutions, Shaping Policies, Deploy Technologies, Embed Innovations Into Mainstream Institutions, stuff like that. So, like I said, it'll be really, really good, and I'm really excited to go and bring back information for us that I think we can utilize and start bridging some of the gap that we have with the base for retaining their workforce, as well as helping ourselves all the way around, infrastructure, jobs, that kind of stuff. If I don't kill myself. Veterans Stand Down, again, reminder, it's Friday. Um, if I don't kill myself. Veterans Stand Down, again, reminder, it's Friday, nine AM, so please come out, support veterans. Um, and if you are a veteran, thank you again for your service, appreciate it. Um, the Second Annual Light the Night, which is the candlelight vigil for recovery awareness, will take place at city hall on the twenty-fourth, five to eight, I believe. Um, and, uh, Dine with the Candidates is on the thirtieth and there's a forum here at city hall on the fourth. I didn't want to forget to throw those out there. Skate Park, you talked about the skate park with the action committee, correct? Um, I want to meet with you later, but there is some, um, stuff coming down on that to help our youth, um, with some permanent platforms and also looking at doing the BMX. Um, so the people that are involved with that are gonna meet with Jason and once we have some information that's workable, we'll have a committee meeting. So to discuss, to bring that forward. So I'm excited about that. Yeah, hey, professional skateboarding people that actually do it and teach it and everything. It's kind of exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and with that, I think that is everything that I have so far. So thanks.
Jim?
Um, just want to thank staff for the nice new paved roads we got, so. Drummond and, and Sunland and, um, I think there's a few others, but I don't have them all down. So they, they look really nice, uh, very well done. Um, no, I didn't have anything else, so. Have a good night.
You guys pretty much got everything I, I asked, I was going to ask, but let me ask one thing. Next time we do a road, can we, we bore all the burden for it being done at the times when it was done. We suffered the slings and arrows and deservedly so because everybody was inconvenienced. But once it's completed, next time we have a ribbon cutting or some kind of announcement or, or congratulations to all the people who made it happen, I'd like to see that happen.
Our, our next major, uh, street really is gonna be that, uh, South China Lake Boulevard between Bowman and, and College Heights. You want it done in conjunction with the grand opening of Walmart?
Oh, Lord. Probably not. But, uh, but I would like to acknowledge all the people that made it happen. Clearly, they were the ones that bore the burden. I've, I've heard of people yelling at people because they had to get in or couldn't go or couldn't get through and, and legitimately, they were inconvenienced horribly, but they got a new road. So anyhow, next time I'd like us to be able to remind it. So I thank you all for coming and I'll make, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.